I would like to call this meeting to order. That means you have to, yep. There you go. I would like to call this meeting to order. Will you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Will the agenda coordinator please call the roll?
Mayor Reed.
Here.
Vice Mayor Litt.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here, ma'am.
Councilmember Marciano.
Here.
Councilmember Tinsley.
Here.
Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications this evening to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Next, we're going to move on to announcements and presentations. First, we would like to call Noel Martinez, President and CEO of the Palm Beach North Chamber of Commerce, to the podium. And Candace is going to start us off.
Actually, Noel and his executive board members. Whoever is present. Good evening. Tonight, I have the honor of shining the spotlight on the very special relationship that our city shares with the Palm Beach North Chamber of Commerce. Not all cities have a chamber, but they should. In our community, the Chamber has grown to be so much more than a mere business directory or a place for networking. In addition to fiercely supporting our small businesses and providing opportunities for education and connection, the Palm Beach North Chamber of Commerce in recent years has made it their goal to be an outstanding partner to civic organizations. Here are just a few of the ways our Chamber has and continues to make a difference. Through facilitating relationships with local elected officials, Palm Beach North has led efforts to prepare our business community for major crisis events through the Disaster Resiliency Action Plan. They continue to ensure our city's voice is heard by involving us in planning through the Economic Development Committee, Sustainability Committee, and Government Affairs Committee. During the COVID-19 crisis, Palm Beach North was by our side to assist with planning and administration of the Small Business Relief Fund. Yes, the city provided the funding. However, the Chamber provided invaluable input to us on cutting through the red tape to get our businesses the help they truly needed to stay afloat. In the last two years, with the Artie Graff Fine Arts Festival, Palm Beach North has brought thousands of people to Palm Beach Gardens and boosted our local economy by the millions. Recognizing that our district park was a model site for the event, they have been the most gracious partners in event planning and execution. Most recently, the Chamber advocated for the city when we could not do so ourselves. The tax abatement referendum, excuse me, was a critical ballot initiative that we used to foster economic development. The Chamber and its executive board understood why this tool was needed, gave us their vote of confidence publicly, and led communication efforts to get the word out. With their help, thankfully, the referendum passed. And now, a brief word about their fearless leader, Noel Martinez. Noel's leadership as President and CEO has been enlightening. He's a visionary who sees so well how all the parts fit together. He has made bold strides in the area of diversity and inclusion through both breakfast meeting topics, Artie Graff artists, and is attracting younger people and those of different backgrounds to engage. Noel, I know it has not been easy to shake things up, but we are so glad you have. For these reasons and many more, we would like to present the Palm Beach North Chamber of Commerce with a token of our appreciation. From all of us at the city, we want to say thank you. Will City Council members join me, please? We will be presenting this plaque, and I'll just read what it says. "The City of Palm Beach Gardens presents this award for outstanding partnership to Palm Beach North Chamber of Commerce in appreciation for the outstanding dedication and support to the City of Palm Beach Gardens from City Council, City Manager, and staff awarded this third day of November 2022." Thank you.
Thank you.
You want my speech?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Love you, girl.
Thank you so much.
It's a pleasure. No, no, I haven't. You have it saved somewhere, right?
Please indulge me in thanking our staff. Thank you, Candace, for those beautiful words. Well deserved, you guys. Thank you to our City Manager, Attorney, and especially to our clerk staff for putting together such a beautiful... Thank you, Lilly, for protecting it with your life until we could get to this tonight. It's beautiful. Thank you all. So next, we have our partnership presentation from the Palm Beach County Sports Commission and Cressy Sports Performance. Could we please have Charlotte Przynski, our Leisure Services Administrator, come to the podium? And Daniel Prieto.
Good evening, Council.
Thank you.
Here tonight to have two presentations of great partners of the city. Before we begin that, and I'm up here talking, but I really want to throw kudos to Dan Prieto, who's our Deputy Leisure Services Administrator. He is at the forefront of what's going on in the economic of sport, and his staff, including Tim Ford, have really fostered these partnerships, and they're the ones who are boots-on-the-ground making all of this happen. So the things that you hear tonight, you know, have been enabled through your work, through Mr. Ferris's work in administration, but they're truly the gentlemen that get things done day in and day out. And I'd be remiss without thanking Corey Wilder also for maintaining excellent facilities that help facilitate the economic of sport. So the first team I'd like to call up is Cressy Sports, if you can join me. Eric Cressy, his wife Anna, and Shane Ray are the proprietors of Cressy Sport, and they're going to share with you tonight their economic impact report. It is required by their agreement with us, but we wanted to bring it to you tonight because it's an amazing statement for how we're positioning sport in our community. So come on up.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to present and for the wonderful opportunity you've afforded us to work with the City of Palm Beach Gardens. I think I can speak for Shane and Anna and the rest of our team that going into this, there wasn't a tremendous amount of precedent for P3 agreements, you know, in our realm. I know it happened around the state of Florida, so we were kind of feeling it out as we went into it. And I think what we really quickly realized was that it was not just a partnership, but it was a collection of relationships with wonderful people who are very devoted to a common goal with us, and we couldn't be more appreciative. Charlotte, thanks, you know, many of those folks. And Kumra was there from day one with doing wonderful paperwork and talking through Mr. Lohman as well for many of his insights with respect to working through contract negotiations. Just so many wonderful people have contributed to this that brought us to this day. What was very interesting about this relationship is our first day in the facility was December 27th, 2019. We moved in with several dozen professional baseball players who were anxious to train while the paint was still drying in the facility. We moved in, we survived the first six weeks, sent them all off to spring training, and then they all promptly returned, thanks to COVID. So in that moment, we realized that we did have a wonderful partnership because folks like David Reyes, you know, the operations building, and Daniel Prieto and Charlotte helping with field access allowed us to really navigate COVID at a time where a lot of gyms around the country weren't getting much direction. So we're incredibly appreciative, and really, that led us to now. And just when we thought we were getting a little semblance of normalcy in the baseball world, Major League Baseball's owners locked out their players back on December 1st this past year. So it threw us another curveball. And as of this spring, we actually had 10% of all Major League players working out here in Palm Beach Gardens with us. So the culmination of that is tonight, both starting pitchers in the World Series game this evening, Noah Syndergaard and Justin Verlander, both did their rehabilitation from elbow surgeries at this facility and trained there. They both relocated to this area for the training, so it's a, you know, it really is an opportunity to celebrate how wonderful this community has been to us and how appreciative we are of those opportunities. So that said, some of the, you know, nuts and bolts, the actual numbers of it, we saw 170 players from Major League Baseball organizations that visited CSP Florida in the designated period. Our period is May 31st of one year through the following year at that point. 125, or 74% of them spent a month or longer in the area. 73 moved here, 19 live locally, and 33 commute to Palm Beach County, you know, from as far north as Port St. Lucie and down by Miami. We saw many that were short-term visits, who stayed at local hotels and rented cars and things like that. 71% of these have made Major League debuts, which is a big deal. Major League salary minimum's a little over $700,000 now. So when we look at these percentages, we estimate the facility brought at least 89 baseball players and their families from the top-income tax bracket to Palm Beach County for at least one month per year and likely much more. This doesn't take into account a lot of independent ball athletes who aren't in affiliated baseball with the 30 teams that comprise Major League Baseball. And it certainly doesn't speak to the many, many college players that come from afar, individuals who come to fix a shoulder, whatever it may be. So it's a little bit, you know, limited in that regard. But what was most interesting about this second year's economic impact report were the trends that we're seeing in our professional baseball clientele. They're coming as short-term visits. They're coming for two to three days. The past two days, we had the 2019 National League Rookie of the Year, who was in town, and they fall in love with the area quickly. In fact, one of them was looking at Zillow on his ride to the airport as he left yesterday, according to his buddy who was driving him. So what we found were a lot of these players who are coming to the area quickly fall in love, not just with the area, but the ability to do everything in one place, where they can do their baseball activities, do their rehabilitation, get massage therapy, do their strength and conditioning, all these different, you know, pieces to the puzzle. So among those players, we saw seven home sales just among our Major League clients in the past year. Those are just the ones that we know about. So we're seeing more and more people that are falling in love with it in short visits and then staying. We have a collection of different categories for our economic impact. I've just alluded to the professional baseball side of things. The Collegiate League of the Palm Beaches is something that takes place in the area that was co-founded by our business partner, Brian Kaplan, many, many years ago, and that brings hundreds of players to the area. They actually use the stadium field adjacent to the facility. And we also see a number of college athletes who may just move here for the training only, even without playing in a league. Maybe it's someone who had a surgery and is looking to rehabilitate. We have high school athletes locally. We have everyday adult clients. We have strength camps that a lot of the wives and girlfriends of our Major League players will participate in early in the day. And then we actually become a very prominent location for scouting events, where Justin Verlander or Corey Kluber, some of these very high-profile athletes, may have their agents set up scout days, and we may see, you know, scouts from all 30 teams show up to watch them throw. And, you know, basically, you know, Justin Verlander was paid $25 million based on the result of that, you know, basically scouting event that we put on. So we have a large hitting clientele, pitching clientele. You know, Shane is a very regarded manual therapist who also works with the Miami Dolphins. We have physical therapists, three of them on staff. We'll see observational guests. We have four trainers from Japan, a Japanese league team who came by to observe just a few weeks ago. And certainly, our staff has grown. We've been able to develop our internships, and there's been, you know, direct permitting and ground fees, you know, paid to the talent. So this is kind of where all the different entities come together. You know, moreover, I think it's really important that we emphasize that we wanted so much to be part of this community, you know, so things like training the firefighter recruits has been just, you know, something that our staff has absolutely loved, just an opportunity to get more involved, including with coach education. We're actually in the works of planning a night with the pros that we run for basically younger kids and their parents to get direction on college recruiting and how to take care of their arm and, you know, nutrition, all these things that young players really need to benefit from. So we're very excited about that. When all is said and done, we estimate our total economic impact over that year at about $6.8 million. There are some limitations to this report. You know, we're still, you know, determining who actually bought housing here. You know, when an agent meets five of his players here for lunch, it's hard to keep track of just about everybody and where they go. We were very appreciative of the Palm Beach County Sports Commission for providing some numbers that we could use to actually do this calculation. This is up from last year. And more significantly, I think tonight is a good night to highlight where we think we're going, because we do continue to see an upward trajectory in this regard. One thing that has changed in the past year is unionization among minor league baseball players, which actually may limit facility access for players and affiliated organizations. There's discussions of whether those players would need to be paid if they were voluntarily training at their complexes. So here, we have five separate teams who have complexes within 30 minutes. So there may actually be a situation where minor league players could actually be pushed to the private sector more, which could drive some more things in our regard. We've done some collaborative events with John Carney, who's a retired NFL kicker who works with a lot of specialists, punters, kickers, long snappers. So they did one event, earlier there was a smaller one, and then they actually came back with many more, because the guys were always looking for an East Coast affiliate. We've done some collaborative events with Time to Sign, which is a college placement company that effectively helps kids find places to train during gap years before they enter college. So this brings a lot of kids who want to get better and, you know, who are generally very high academic kids to the area. And then more free agent showcases. We are seeing more one-year contracts in Major League Baseball, so more and more players actually do need to do those kind of showcases. Our staff has grown. Surely, you know, the increased cost of housing, consumer goods does drive up the actual economic impact. We are looking to bring back more seminars at the facility now that the world is a little bit more open. And certainly, we've had some preliminary discussions just about facility expansions in our existing kind of footprint to find ways to place our staff in office spaces and maybe even offer a little bit more, you know, a larger service base to our folks, you know, have an expanded economic impact. So I appreciate the time to speak to you. And again, above all else, we certainly appreciate the collaborative effort that everyone has put into this, and I'm happy to take questions if you have any.
Great, Eric. Thank you so much. Truly appreciate it. Truly, working with the Cressy family has been an honor. They are super collaborative with our team. They are not demanding. They're complete partners in every sense, as is the next person we're going to ask to come up. Palm Beach County Sports Commission and before Gardens North County District Park was built, brought a lot of activities and events to us, but since GDP has opened, we've really seen an uptick in the programs and the events that we've been able to host on their behalf. So I'd like to ask George Lindley to come up to give you a little bit more insight as to what they do. And I do want to thank him as he's walking up. He actually submitted this presentation to the Florida Recreation and Park Association for an economic sports award. We actually lost to a county, but we came in a close second, so we appreciate his support on that. But George Lindley.
Thank you, Charlotte. It is a great honor to be here. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, City Manager Ron Ferris. I'm privileged to be a resident, so it's extra special that I'm here giving this presentation, but you truly are one of our greatest partners. My colleague Scott Galinsky's here. He put a lot of work into the presentation that we submitted to the Florida Sports Foundation and the Florida Parks and Recreation Association. We truly believe you have one of Florida's finest parks and rec departments, and we'll continue to do that, and hopefully, next year, we will win and be, go from number two to number one. The City of Palm Beach Gardens is a leader in terms of sports events and tourism. You know that sports is part of your DNA. It's part of your fabric. You're a leader from a local sports community perspective, from youth sport participation, from recreational sports, but you're also a leader in events from a statewide, regional, national, and global level. The City of Palm Beach Gardens has truly been one of our greatest partners, and we're very, very appreciative of the partnership and the friendship that you have offered us. There's no doubt that the city, its Parks and Rec Department, goes above and beyond to support sports tourism in the Palm Beaches. Every time we reach out to Parks and Recreation, to the city staff, the efforts, the investigation of the opportunities, the let's-find-a-way attitude is unsurpassed, and we are very appreciative of it. This city, in my opinion, it's operated as a business, and it is business-friendly, and the events that conduct their business here say the same thing, at least back to me, and hopefully, you're hearing that same message from those event donors. As I said, it's part, your Parks and Recs Department is one of Florida's finest. Number two next year, we'll make sure it's number one. And when you look at the past year, now, this is from 2021, and I can tell you 2022 will outpace, probably significantly, 2021, but we supported 41 events that took place within the city. Those events attracted over 35,000 attendees and generated over 41,000 hotel room nights. Those overnight accommodations create a lot of bed tax for the county as a whole, and it's about 18%, close to 20% of our total room night production. So like I said, this sports tourism is flourishing here in this county. We project that the economic impact is over $29 million. That is not including the Honda Classic on the PGA Tour. Most of this economic impact is derived through your Parks and Rec Department and your public facilities, but the combination of your public and private facilities, again, is one of the best in terms of not just our county, but in our state and beyond. I'm just, when you think of events, from the PGA Tour to NCAA Golf Championships, to the First Responder Games, from fast pitch softball, Cal Ripken Baseball, international soccer training, amateur golf, countless tennis and pickleball events. In fact, we have a World Pickleball Open happening in a couple of weeks here. This past May, we hosted In Your City, the International Tennis Federation Senior World Championships, generated 10,000 room nights across the county. Boca was also a partner, and we had 40 different nations represented coming here because of the City of Palm Beach Gardens. From the African-American Golfers Hall of Fame, to collegiate conference championships, to lacrosse tournaments, to the Best of Youth Soccer tournaments, these are all samples of events that happened this past year. I'm going to point out three events that happened last year. This one in particular is happening again, actually, the end of this month. It will start the first phase of this event, and I'm really talking about two. It's two of Florida's largest youth soccer tournaments, which last year attracted 518 teams, 15,000 total visitors, and just under 9,000 hotel room nights. And what we project to be $7 million of direct visitor spending, that was the 3V3 Live National Championship and the DPL Winter Showcase. And it was a big effort. We had to work hard to win those events, but the city helped put together that bid. And also, last year, and we're proud to partner with the Palm Beach Gardens Youth Athletic Association in hosting Cal Ripken Baseball Events. There was four. We supported the bid, and we were successful in winning the Cal Ripken 10U and 12U World Series. Those four events, over 7,500 room nights and $5 million of economic impact. It's a pretty big deal. And a special event that we worked on last year with the city and its Parks and Rec Department was delivering the First Responder Games. Happens every two years. It's an Olympic-style competition dedicated to our nation's heroes, police, fire, and military. This event had about 40 different sports across the county, but this city was an anchor venue, and without the city saying yes, the county would not have hosted the event. That was just last year. I hope I could come back a year from now, because I could tell you 2022 is going to outpace 2021. Finally, as I said, you have one of the finest Parks and Rec Departments, you have some of the finest facilities for recreational sports and for hosting tournaments and showcases and events on a national level. The Gardens North County District Park has been a game changer, right with the Joe Russo Athletic Complex and 10 soccer fields. That's one of the reasons why we're hosting 500 teams over two tournaments, because this venue is top of the line. We had a site visit just a week ago with Toronto FC from Major League Soccer, and my colleague that was conducting the site visit told me that they looked at the facility and they said, "Look, these are some of the finest and most prestigious soccer fields." They were looking at the turf, professional soccer, that we've seen in the state of Florida. And so that's a testament to the Parks Department and your efforts of maintaining this facility. And finally, as we talk about baseball, and it's nice to see Mike Bauer here, the GM from Roger Dean Stadium, I will say, baseball is a big part of our overall sports makeup, and we host probably 30 youth baseball tournaments, high school age, collegiate age, at our spring training facilities. When we're hosting events at Roger Dean Stadium, a majority of the hotel impact's actually happening right here in the City of Palm Beach Gardens. And often, what you may not realize, and Mike might not realize, and I know there's an event coming up in a couple of weeks, Men's Senior Baseball League, you're helping us because you're providing practice fields for some of these teams before they go to the spring training facilities, and we greatly appreciate that. That's a significant service for us, and it's, again, it's helping the hotel and hospitality industry in the City of Palm Beach Gardens. But just one year from now, in November of, it will be 2023, the Miracle League All-Star Game is coming to Palm Beach County. Now, the Miracle League field is special, and it's a variation of the game of baseball for, as you know, for severely challenged and disabled youth. And while it's great for a local community, there is a National All-Star Game, and we're bringing that here. I have not, I've seen a lot of sporting events, and nothing has inspired me more or has touched me more than the Miracle League and what you're doing right here for our youth and this variation of the game of baseball. And to be able to host now the All-Star Game on a national level, I hope you all be out there, and I believe we will all walk away from that event more inspired about what sport can do. And so that's coming to the City of Palm Beach Gardens, and that's just about a year away, and that will be probably one of the most special events that our Sports Commission has been associated with. So thank you for all you do for sports tourism, for our county, and for our Sports Commission.
Thank you, George. And again, I want to call out Corey Wilder and David Reyes for the exceptional fields that they do. We put the impact on it in recreation, but they maintain it at an amazing spot, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much. Anybody want to add anything on the way out? No? Impressive. Thank you all so much. Next is comments from the public. I have three cards for items not on the agenda. Actually, we're going to start with Ms. Pam Payne. If you could come up to the podium, please. If you would be so kind as to state your name and your address, you'll have three minutes.
I won't take three minutes. My name is Pam Payne, and I have the privilege of being the CEO of the Homeless Coalition of Palm Beach County. We appreciate so very, very much for our providers, the people that are out there every day working with the homeless and hungry, that the City of Palm Beach Gardens has proclaimed November Hunger and Homeless Awareness Month. We live in one of the most beautiful places on earth, and yet, we have a staggering number of people who can't afford their home or to put food on their tables. What's necessary for us is that this is escalating. What, in my job as the CEO of the Homeless Coalition, we pay for the first, last, and security on new homes for the homeless who go through a program. What used to be $1,800 is now $2,900. What used to be $5,000 is edging up to $10,000. What we need to do is get the word out to people about the resources and services that are available to them, and that's why we appreciate so much the awareness of being Proclaimed Hunger and Homeless Awareness Month, so that these people can get the support that is available to them today. Thank you so much. On behalf of our board and Vice Mayor Litt, who is part of our board, we appreciate everything that you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we look forward to talking about that on our consent agenda in just a moment. Thank you. So next, we have Rich Orman. If you could please come to the microphone at the podium and state your name and your address.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Richard Orman. I live at 4203 Oak Street, right across the street. I live at 4203 Oak Street, right across the street. I, I'm here because of my concern about neighborhoods like ours. We call it garden aisles. We don't have a homeowners association. We're kind of at the mercy of the City of Palm Beach Gardens to take care of code enforcement in our neighborhood, and that's what brings me here. We have a voluntary homeowners association that we started a few years ago, but it's nothing like most of the homeowners associations that address a substantial part of the city's residential neighborhoods. I'd like to ask the City of Gard, uh, Gardens to take up a more proactive role toward code enforcement, the city's code enforcement in our neighborhoods. People, I mean, you, you're really not supposed to park your boat or your RV in the front yard of our neighborhood, but people do, and the city does nothing about it unless residents call and have somebody come out, and, and they do. But I see all these little electrical, electrical vehicles running around. It'd be nice if they would come around the neighborhood every so often and make note of those people who are violating the code. That would be terrific, and it would be helpful if we could begin to see an increase in, in that program. But recently, a more sincere issue faces us, and that is that the Airbnb industry has found the Palm Beach Gardens. And I can tell you from friends and family all over the neighborhoods, older neighborhoods, that's very active, and it's a danger to the quality of our older, single-family neighborhoods. They cannot go into the HOAs, the, they're, they're protected. We are not, and we need the city's help. I called and talked to a woman who was very nice and told me, sorry, but there are no codes in the city that protect against them, and there are no codes in the state that protect against them. But I beg to disagree. Our zoning is single-family zoning. Am I over time?
You, you are, but I'll, I'll give you just a teeny bit more. Would you, you're being very respectful, which we appreciate. So just if you could summarize, we'd really, I'm sorry, everyone gets three minutes.
I don't think that three, three minutes went by fast in my life.
You're, you're, you're very well spoken. We're, we're listening, but I, I do have other folks with cards.
Single-family zoning does not permit businesses. Businesses, Airbnb are businesses. That's what they're running, and those homes are businesses, and there's no reason why the city can't enforce it. You have to do what I do, when I want to find out. I call Airbnb and find out what's available, and I know where they are in my neighborhood. So I would like to ask the city's help with that.
We appreciate you being here tonight. What we'll do is, we have your information, and we'll have code enforcement follow-up with you directly, if that would be okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
And thank you for doing a great job running the city.
I'm very familiar with Dr. Orman. How you doing?
I'm good.
All right.
We'll get with staff and look into it, and we'll, we'll get with you and talk to you about what you see over there. We'll see what we can do to help.
I know you'll do a good job of that, Ron.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight. All right, next, we have Dr. Tracy Pellet from Palm Beach State College. Again, if you could come to the podium, state your name and your address.
All right, and I will certainly watch that three minutes, too. College professors are not the most concise, so I'll be as quick as I can. I am Tracy Pellet. I'm the Provost and Dean. That's just a fancy way of saying I'm the senior administrator here at the Palm Beach Gardens campus, and I'm really here for two things, or two reasons. One, to bring you greetings from President Ava Parker. She certainly, as you know, is a tremendous partner for Palm Beach County and certainly Palm Beach Gardens. There's nothing more instrumental or, or key to a community and its success of education, and, and one of the areas obviously Palm Beach State provides is that economic impact to families and, and students of all ages to get a post-secondary credential of some kind and hopefully degree. Some of those will move on to FAU and other universities, and some will go directly into the workforce. We, we look to be that, and as you know, has been a, a great partner for many years. I, I'm not only just the Provost and, and Dean, I'm also a resident. And I, and I have to tell you, just to give you some feedback, as a new resident in the last two months, I have not seen a city that's probably more transparent, more having the ability to connect with its citizens than Palm Beach Gardens. So, so my kudos, not only to the Dean, but, but I'll also throw some kudos at the Chamber of Commerce. Nothing I've seen more active than what you have in this region. I'm not telling you anything you don't know, but, but I will tell you this. One of the things you should know is that you have a great partner up the street. We look forward to interacting even more than probably we have. There's some really exciting things coming to our campus in the near future. You'll hear, you'll see more about that, but everybody in this room, we look forward to engaging with you even more. Thank you for the opportunity to come just to say hi and to put a face, at least to the name, and, and appreciate following some of the great superstars that you have here. So have a great meeting. I will not be here till 11:30 PM, but wish you all the best in your pursuits. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I hope we're not here, too, but Dr. Pellet, thank you so much for coming. All right. Wonderful. Thank you all so much. We're going to be moving on to our consent agenda. Would anyone on my team up here like to pull anything off of the consent?
I'll pull item M off the consent.
Oh, I missed, oh my goodness, I completely ignored our city manager. I'm so sorry. Um, city manager report.
I'd be happy to wait till after consent if you would like.
Well, sure. This, why not? We'll just get it done. Thank you for being so flexible. So we're going to pull M?
M.
That's Vice Mayor? Okay, lovely. So can I get a motion and a second to approve our consent agenda with M removed?
I'll make a motion to approve with M removed.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. That, do you want to talk about M?
Sure. With Pam here, I think she's still here, well, in, in the spirit of the CEO of the Homeless Coalition being here and this being homelessness and hunger awareness month, I wanted to pull the proclamation that she spoke about earlier. Whereas the state of Florida ranks 15th in the nation for the highest homeless population, and one in seven of the state's population struggles with hunger. And whereas the last Palm Beach County Homeless Point in Time Count in 2022 identified 1,404 individuals and families experiencing homelessness, and the Palm Beach County Hunger Relief Plan indicates that more than 300,000 residents struggle with hunger. And whereas the purpose of Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month is to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including the shortage of affordable housing in Palm Beach County for very low-income residents, and to encourage support for homeless assistance service providers, as well as community service opportunities for students and school service organizations. And whereas the Palm Beach County Homeless Advisory Board has developed Leading the Way Home, a robust 10-year plan designed as the next phase of ending homelessness in Palm Beach County. And whereas the intent of Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week is consistent with the activities of the Homeless Advisory Board, Homeless and Housing Alliance, Palm Beach County Food Bank, The Lord's Place, Gulfstream Goodwill Industries, Adopt a Family, and other service providers in Palm Beach County. Now therefore, I Chelsea Reed, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of November 12 through 202022 as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week.
Thank you, and thank you for all the work you do on the board. We really appreciate it and for bringing it to us on our, on our council team. Ron, do you have a city manager report tonight?
Let's take a mic.
Oh, we got to vote. Goodness gracious, I'm running right over it. All right.
So I will make a motion to approve M.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion passes 5-0 now.
Yes.
My mistake. Sir, do you have a city manager report this evening?
I have a couple of items I'd like to bring to your attention. As you know, we've been keeping you informed as to the city's efforts over on the West Coast, doing some volunteer work, both in our fire rescue department and our police department. They've become even more active than the last time I reported to you. So I would like to call up first Keith Breyer, Fire Rescue Chief, and then Police Chief Clint Shannon, to give you an update on what's going on with our efforts to provide some help over there.
Good evening, Adam Mayor, Council. On October 22, Palm Beach Gardens Fire Rescue deployed a second strike team to the West Coast for a 10-day deployment, which consisted of a rescue truck and three personnel. So just so you're aware, these deployments are voluntary. The work is physically, mentally, emotionally draining, and the living conditions are deplorable. Yet, on both deployments, requests for volunteers filled within minutes, which is a direct reflection of our personnel's dedication to public service. The, the crew that was there was tasked with assisting Lee County EMS, who had been overwhelmed with emergency calls since Ian made landfall. If we can go to the second slide. There we go. The crew was assigned the EMS calls during 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM operational period. Apparently, they got the short straw in their oven night. They were also subject to call during their rest periods, but according to the crews, according to the crews, there's still a lot of devastation over there. There's still a lot of things that they're trying to figure out, but the exhausted Lee County medics were extremely thankful for crews, the, all the task force that showed up to help. Just to recognize the strike team members, they included Lieutenant Ryan Winkelman, Fire Medic Julie Dudley, and Firefighter EMT George Ferguson. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, Council members. Palm Beach Gardens Police Department currently has 10 officers deployed on the West Coast of Florida. They are stationed at a base camp and assigned exclusively to Sanibel Island. That, that started last Saturday on October 29. We're partying, part of a deployment of 60 officers from police departments throughout Palm Beach County, and we've deployed specialized vehicles, mobile command vehicles, watercraft, and K-9 units. You see, so as I scroll through some of the, the pictures, this is base camp that's set up on Sanibel Island. Officers are conducting protective patrols, answering calls for service, and providing any needs that may arise while working 16-hour shifts exclusively at night. There's currently still no electric service on the island, and they have been experiencing some problems with looters, burglars. They're trying to access the island at night, sometimes via wave runners and watercraft. They're also dealing with contractor fraud, theft, and a lot of other issues. Some of the devastation over there that's been reported by the media really is, has been, I think has been understated when you actually experience it, experience it. And these were, some of the pictures our groups took while they were over there, and while they're still over there. We're going to continue relieving our officers that are there and sending a dozen officers on a weekly basis throughout the month of November and possibly longer. This is one character our officers ran, ran across in the middle of the night. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to travel to Sanibel. We delivered some much-needed equipment, which included some drones and night vision equipment for our officers. I also had the opportunity to meet with Sanibel Chief Bill Dalton, who expressed his gratitude, and just our, our officers that are over there now have received rave reviews from their coworkers and the, the rest of the contingency from, from Palm Beach County. It was very rewarding to, to help them out. They're in dire needs, and it looks like it's going to continue for some time. But again, this, this all couldn't, couldn't, couldn't occur without the support of our city manager and, of course, our elected officials. So we're going to continue to reach out to whatever we can to help them out on the West Coast, and we expect to be there for at least, at least in these next three to four weeks, if not longer. But again, as, as Chief Breyer said, these are all, all of these officers are volunteering. And, and like Chief Breyer said, too, it didn't take long for us to fill up a month worth of assignments to the West Coast. So the officers feel the same way when I spoke to them yesterday. An extremely rewarding and humbling experience for all of them, and we know if we're ever in need, we'll, we'll definitely have this, our partners reaching out to us. So again, thank you for the support.
You know, Chief, before you walk away, I know this isn't the first time we've done this. We help, and God forbid, we need to reciprocate that if something happens to us, but we need to honor these officers and recognize them when they return, no matter if it's the entire agency. We need to figure out how to, this is way beyond normal duty of, of policing, and Keith are fired, you know, they're over there probably saving lives like they do here. So if there's a way we can make sure we, we honor these guys and, and recognize them when we get back, even if we parade the whole police department right through, in one door and out the next, and we'll, you know, do something for them. Thank you.
Yes, we certainly will. Thank you, Councilmember. Like I said, I couldn't be prouder, and we waited yesterday until they woke up from, from sleeping, since they're working these long hours at night to make sure that, you know, we recognized their, their service over there yesterday.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Carl. And I'd like to, I could speak on behalf of all the council. We, we would love to support that as well, our staff. And thank you both, Chief Breyer, Chief Shannon, for all you do.
I have one other item. In the spirit of Pay It Forward that we just heard about, you have on your agenda tonight Resolution 79, which Operation Sister City. Just a brief explanation, well, maybe not so brief explanation of what that's all about. In 2018, the City of Palm Beach Gardens became a sister city to approximately 300 employees up in Bay County and the city of Callaway, following that Hurricane Four, Michael. Once again, we're requesting to provide assistance and relief to 91 employees and their families hit hard with category four Ian. A few days after the hurricane, the city of Callaway, who we helped back in 2018, called and asked if they could partner with us in Sister City. Whatever city it is that we choose that we're going to help, they wanted to help Pay It Forward because of all the help, to show their appreciation. The Bay County Public Works Agency, who we also help, they're donating $10,000 to the American Public Works Association to help out Public Works employees down in Hardy County. Through our operation of Sister City, we are partnering with Christ Fellowship Church and the city of Callaway, which donated $15,000 towards the efforts, gave the money to the city to use to help. We also got a $10,000 donation from Christ Fellowship Church. In addition to that, they're going to provide a lot of other services along with the city and partner with us, traveling hopefully over there and, and, and again, paying it forward, I guess. We set a goal of $35,000 for ourselves. The city of Ochula is 4,801 residents. They did suffer a lot of damage, flooding, winds, trees down, power out, and the Peace River overflowed, overflowed, overflowed its riverbeds during the storm. They accumulated an awful lot of rain. The 90, of the 91 employees, eight employees lost their home and all of their belongings. Most of the damages, again, was due to wind, flood more so than wind. So we're making plans with Christ Fellowship Church to make a couple of trips to Ochula. So we're making plans with Christ Fellowship Church to make a couple of trips to Ochula. The first one is November 16th, which we wish to bring to them care packages of personal items that they can't find and get over there, along with purchase cards to help them go purchase things, similar to what we did in Callaway. And that's just the immediate, and we will, Christ Fellowship Church will feed them. On December 16th, we wish to take to Ochula a holiday lunch and additional personal supplies. But we also have the names of all the children in the town, and we think Santa Claus is making a special effort to bring them some toys right before Christmas. So that's the framework of our plan and what we would like to do with Ochula. That's the financing. We'll also have, on our website, we have an Amazon, help me out with that one, Amazon wishlist. So with the wishlist, anyone who wishes to make donations to help us with our efforts can donate efforts, but they can find that whole thing on the city's webpage. So there's a link, and it's also on our social media platforms, so that people who, and there's a list of things that we're looking for. So people can contribute. We will, like we did before, city staff, since it's only 91 people we're looking at, will be putting together the boxes and getting the purchase cards and be able to help out those who lost their homes a little bit more than everyone else, to see if we could give them a leg up and get them started. So when you reached Resolution 79, I just wanted to have you all know that in advance of what our desires would be if you will approve that resolution. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It was actually kind of better to savor that a little bit. That was excellent. Thank you. Looking forward to talking about that. So we're going to move on to our public hearings. I'm going to read the quasi-judicial statement. Tonight, we are holding quasi-judicial hearings on the following cases. Resolution 65, 2022, Frenchman's Creek Clubhouse. Resolution 66, 2022, site plan within the Avenue Planned Community Development PCD. Resolution 67, 2022, site plan within parcel A, Pod 20, of the Avenue Planned Community Development PCD. This means that the city council is required by law to base its decision on the evidence contained in the record of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at the hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The council is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testify tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, and other participants have made their presentations and will be permitted in the order of the witnesses' appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or wish to offer written comments, please fill out a card over here to my right and give it to our agenda coordinator over here on my left. The agenda coordinator will now swear in all persons who intend to offer testimony this evening on any of these cases.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Thank you, Renata. Could you please read the title for Ordinance 9, 2022?
Ordinance 9, 2022. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter 74 Utilities by repealing Article 4 Water Shortage Regulations in its entirety and re-adopting Article 4 as revised and with a new landscape irrigation conservation regulations to provide for local implementation of the mandatory year-round landscape irrigation conservation measures, Rules of the South Florida Water Management District 40E-24 FAC, providing definitions, landscape irrigation measures, exceptions to the landscape irrigation schedule, establishing a requirement to utilize rain sensor technology, providing variance procedures from certain irrigation limitations, and providing for enforcement of and penalties for violation of irrigation regulations, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date, and for other purposes.
Thank you so much. Has anything changed since first reading? No?
No, ma'am.
All right. Do we need a presentation? I'm asking, Council? No? All right. So is there anyone wishing to speak? We have no comment cards, and so, I did not open the hearing, sorry. Opening the hearing. And we have no comment cards. We have no one coming to the podium, so I'm going to proceed. We're going to close the hearing. Can I get a motion and a second to approve, to bring it to discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
May I get a second to discuss this?
I'll second.
Thank you. All right. We'll spring it back for discussion. Rochelle, since you brought it up for the motion, are you good to go?
I would like to wait and hear what my fellow council members have to say.
Understood. All right. Who'd like to speak?
I think Marcy should speak up first. She was the one who brought the question at the last council meeting, so if you have any further information to...
I'm happy to speak first. No problem. As you know, at the first reading, I mentioned that I'm 100% in favor of water conservation. I just would love for all of us to approve something that all of our communities can live with. Because most of the communities have large common areas, they won't be able to adhere to some of this language. And after serving on an HOA board for almost a decade, I can attest that it's not only about whether or not Palm Beach Gardens can enforce this, which we know this is a very tough thing to enforce, but it's also about protecting the HOAs from an opportunity for someone that maybe have a gripe with them, or somebody that's not a very happy resident that brings it up and then will have no choice but to enforce it. So why not strengthen the language so it works better for all of us? After first reading, I thought I came up with a solution, and I did chat with Ron and Max, but they informed me that South Florida Water Management didn't prefer that suggestion, that language that I thought would work. So I called South Florida Water Management District, and I spoke to the Bureau Chief of Water Supply, his name is Mark Elsner, and his team, actually. They were the original authors of the ordinance language, and I shared my concerns. I shared my concerns of the communities and the professionals that I spoke to. And South Florida and Mark and his team, they were more than happy to come up with a suggestion, and they emailed me, provided me with a clarification definition for us to insert, and they emailed their suggested language, and that was acceptable to all parties. South Florida also assured me that passing or not passing the ordinance would not at all negatively affect Seacoast's ability to obtain a consumptive use permit, but having the ordinance, even with this addition of the definition, could only help Seacoast get their consumptive use permit. And that's what they said. I'm asking you all to support a very simple addition of a definition that South Florida Water Management District came up with and approved with this ordinance. If Ron didn't have an opportunity to give you a copy of it, I brought one for each of you with exactly the redlined, I tabbed the area of the two sections for each one of you, and I have one for the city clerk as well. I'd like to pass that along to each of you. And take a moment to just flip to the tabbed areas and take a moment to look at it. It's very simple, and I would like to, with that said, I would like to make a substitute motion to approve Ordinance 9, 2022, with the addition of the South Florida Water Management District, approve definition to Section 74-72, which reads residential landscape irrigation system. That means a system that is used for irrigation of landscape at a single-family residential home or duplex that does not contain a common area. And to insert Section 74 to Section 74-71-1, in the beginning of the second sentence, the term residential landscape irrigation systems as defined in Section 74-72. So I just made a motion, a substitute motion. Would anybody second that?
I'll second.
And essentially, that is the only change that I would like to make. What it does is it clearly excludes common areas from that section that I had a concern with.
Before we go any further, though, this is, you know, this is quite legal. So if you want to have a second to discuss it, but I'd love to have our...
I need first Marcy to explain why she feels this is necessary, and then to have Max and Ron explain what that means for the city if we change it.
Yeah, I don't speak lawyer, not knowing what this is. Why I feel it's necessary, and it has to do with the time limits of, like, wet checks, for example, of irrigation. So in large common areas, there are irrigation zones, and the irrigation zones only allow 10 minutes for a wet check, which means if you have a right-of-way or a landscape buffer, a big landscape buffer, and I spoke to several irrigation companies, it takes one minute per head, per zone, to do a wet check, which means it takes approximately 30 minutes to do a simple wet check in almost every common area zone. By adding this definition, it will exclude those common areas so that they can abide by the rest of this ordinance. It makes them able to adhere to the ordinance without question. It strengthens the ordinance for all of our communities to be able to adhere to it. So, for example, at the beginning, they said, oh, we need to, you can turn the water on and off. Well, they need the water on a lot of times to actually clear ahead from, you know what I'm talking about, an irrigation head. But not only that, it takes, because these zones are landscape buffers and they are rights-of-way, like road rights-of-way, medians in the common areas of all of our major communities, these areas are very long, and each head is spread out very far. So just to walk from one end where the controller is to turn it on, all the way to the other end, it takes a long time, a lot longer than 10 minutes. So just by inserting this simple definition, then our communities, which we have many, many gated communities that have these common areas in it, and this would allow the HOAs to actually be able to adhere to this water conservation ordinance. And when I talked to South Florida, they were very happy to add this language. They sent it to me within an hour. Once they knew the intent of my concern, and I shared to them, all of the communities that I spoke to, I shared to them the concern, and he was more than happy to change it. Oh, in addition, I'm sorry, I don't know if you received, I received emails, I'm sure you received some emails, because I saw a lot of our communities share their support of this definition, addition.
I got some letters, too, from some of the irrigation companies and communities, but can Max go through legally what this means and what this does for us by changing that language? Do they not have to participate, though, in the restrictions?
What do you mean, do they not have to participate?
Let's have Max. What does it do?
I'd like to hear from Max.
I don't know what it does.
Sure. Ordinance 9, 2022, first of all, the intent, obviously, is water conservation. Section 74-75 is entitled "exceptions to Landscape Irrigation Schedules," so it's an exception to the limitation, your watering schedules. The current exception limits wet checks, as we are commonly referring to them, for all irrigation systems, to 10 minutes per zone, per test cycle. So yes, you could turn it on and off, and each time you turn it on and off, your 10 minutes starts over again. But it's 10 minutes, and that applies to all irrigation systems as defined in the ordinance. The amended language purports to change the exception so that the 10 minutes would only apply to residential irrigation systems as defined. Residential irrigation systems as defined, as provided to you by Councilmember Tinsley. It says residential, it means the system used for irrigation of landscaping at a single-family residential home or duplex that does not contain a common area. So that'd be your individual home or an individual duplex, not including their common areas. Well, the first part of 74-75, sub-paragraph 1, says landscape irrigation systems may be operated during restricted days and/or times for cleaning, maintenance, and repair purposes with an attendant on site in the area being tested. Period. Landscape irrigation systems. Landscape irrigation is a defined term, and it covers everything. Well, then you have, you add the definition of residential landscape systems, now you're narrowing, you're creating a new definition that narrows it, and says that residential landscape systems may routinely be operated for such purposes, no more than once per week. So the 10-minute limit will only apply to single-family homes and duplexes. 10 minutes will not apply to any other irrigation system for any other property in the city. So anybody else, other than a single family in a duplex, will be able to run their irrigation system as long as they want to conduct their maintenance or wet checks. Mr. Elsner responded to an email inquiry provided to him by the city manager when Councilmember Tinsley had asked about, well, could we increase the time or whatever from 10 minutes to 20 minutes, as was brought up at first reading? And so we asked South Florida about it, because we're trying to figure out if it could be done. And he responded in his email and said, "The spirit of the time limit in the exception is to prevent users from irrigating during restricted times under the guise of testing or wet checks." Well, now they won't have any limitation. The only people that we limited were the people with the smallest systems, single-family homes and duplexes. With the exception of maybe a couple of homes, some of the very large homes in Old Palm, or some of the very large homes in Horseshoe Acres or in Steeplechase, most people are going to be able to, most residential homes and duplexes would absolutely be able to do wet checks in 10 minutes or less, certainly cycling the system on and off. So this proposed amendment will permit non-residential users to run their systems without limitation under the guise of testing. It's no wonder that developers and landscapers support the proposed amendment, because now they don't have any limitations on them at all.
That's not true. They have all the rest of the limitations, too.
Actually, that is not true. They have the operational limitations like everyone else, but the exception, this is an exception, this section in the code that is proposed to be amended is an exception that allows you to operate your irrigation system outside the limitations as set forth. I'll give you the section. It's 74-74B. I believe it's B. Yes, it's B. That's 74-74 subsection 4B is the section that sets forth the irrigation limitations, tells you whether you're odd or even, when you can water, when you can't. And this is an exception to that. And that's the whole point. This exception, without the 10-minute limitation for everyone, would allow anyone other than a single-family home or a duplex to run wet checks as long as they want, without limitation. You can certainly pass that if you want. It's your legislative prerogative. But if water conservation is your goal, you have to ask yourself, am I more concerned about water conservation, or am I less concerned about water conservation? Because this will allow anyone other than single-family and duplexes to run wet checks as long as they want. I don't know if that's an enormous issue or not. It's not my legislation. It's not really my concern. It's just that's what it does to the ordinance. I think it was an ill-conceived definition. It's kind of confusing to me. When I read the emails sent by Mr. Elsner, it's difficult to reconcile the contradiction between these two emails. They said they were amenable to this, but then in his first email, he said, "Please don't change it from 10 to 20." And he said that the spirit of this was to prevent people from getting around the 10-minute rule. So that's really kind of the conclusion on that. As it relates to some other matters related to this, I know when things come up, sometimes it's very tempting and for all of you to contact third parties individually and talk to them, and that's fine. The problem with that is that outside of the city, when you do that, sometimes they're not that familiar with the sunshine law, and they're not that familiar with their limitations, and they could... and they could inadvertently end up serving as a conduit. I'm not saying that that happened here and I'm certainly not making any accusations of anyone, but it can certainly give the appearance that that has happened. When you communicate with a third party, they can inadvertently share with some, with one of your other council members in a future discussion, what you said or what your intent is. And then now you have a deliberation on an item that you absolutely know is coming before you that could end up being compromised. Deliberation could be taking place outside the sunshine. So just cautioning you on that to be careful because, like I said, sometimes third parties that aren't really that in tune with the sunshine law don't realize that they can't share the contents of the conversation they have with you, with another council member when they call. So be aware of that yourselves when you speak to them, if they begin to tell you something so that you can avoid that, because I would hate to see anybody get caught by that or get in trouble.
Thank you, Max Rochelle.
May I please? I'm going to let Rochelle go because you went, Max went, Rochelle has been waiting.
Thank you.
So I look at this from a little different perspective as vice chair of the county's Water Task Force. Mark Elsner was at the meeting about a year ago, I think I mentioned, when it came up for first reading, when he first presented his idea for this to the task force and that they were going to essentially write an ordinance that they would like all the cities in the county to pass. It was about a year before we actually brought this up from the time it started. Most of the counties, the cities in the county had already started to work on it. When I started to get some letters from the community this week and today, this morning in particular, I reached out to Mr. Elsner to ask him to explain to me what it was that was being requested and what difference it would make. So he responded back and it's probably the most recent correspondence from him. And his answer to me was, "The district is not requesting any changes to the proposed city's ordinance. The proposed ordinance follows the district's model template ordinance very closely. If the city wanted to make changes, we worked with Councilmember Tinsley on language that would address her concern and be amenable to the district." And he goes on to explain, just to list it. He says, "We weren't aware of this being an issue after working with almost ninety local governments who've adopted acceptable ordinances within our district. This is the first time I am aware of this issue being raised."
Wait, I'm sorry, Marcy, hang on. And then Carl was waiting to go. Thank you, Rochelle.
I'm not really waiting to go at all because I haven't gotten into the weeds on this. I was fine with it the way it was. I sometimes wonder why we get so involved in language when, is it ninety other communities that adopted it, something like that? And it's water conservation. I've been a council member going on seven years here. I don't remember any problems with water consumption coming up where we had to address it with ordinances. I like the direction it goes to suggest to the communities to conserve on water when necessary. And I think to the spirit of the existing language, it's not like if a community, and every zone is different, so I'm not going to agree with it's a thirty-minute average zone to check when, I'm sure some zones are smaller than others, but, you know, I don't know what Ballin Isles does as opposed to Frenchman's Creek. So I'm sure if there's a sprinkler problem, the city's not going to come down on them because they're checking their zones to repair. So I'm going to support it as it is. We already did once. I don't see the, I don't see the purpose of changing the language to be in direct conflict of what the goal is initially, water conservation. It's just, you know, so again, I don't know why we're getting in the weeds of it all, but I'm going to stick with it as is. I don't want the language changed. We haven't had a problem in the past. It's a suggestion ordinance. If we need to have code enforcement, enforce it, then it can be on a case-by-case needed, but I think that if we suggest the communities watch their water consumption, what's wrong with that? So I don't want any language changed and I'm going to support it as is.
Thank you, Carl. Mark?
Well, my question is this. Are we asking communities to be potentially in violation of an ordinance by just testing their systems?
No.
So what's, we all want conservation. Why, so I did not receive an email from Mark Elsner. I received an email from Mark Galloway, who's a landscape contractor. I received a phone call from another one who's a patient of mine and who does work in the city and elsewhere. And they raised the concern that it's an impossibility to do a water check in a large community like Ballin or Ibis or Mirasol or whatever. And they specifically added that language that Mark put in the email. And that's when I sent it to Ron and I asked Ron, is there an email that has more information on this? And then today at three o'clock, he said, well, we don't want to risk a sunshine violation, which is fine. But by that time, I'd already received pretty much what I already knew. We got phone calls from HOA people. If they don't understand it, then maybe I don't understand it. I don't, look, nobody wants to waste water and everybody's in support of water conservation. But it's just an example of how things sometimes just don't get explained properly in advance and then we show up at a council meeting and people aren't really sure what the answer is and you say, okay, fine, we'll wash our hands and just put our hands under our button and walk on. It's not the way it should be. There should have been a much simpler resolution to this since July, when this, when did this come up? In June? When was first reading? September, so it's been three months and there hasn't been a word about it until two days ago. And that's what frustrates me about this whole situation is that, yes, we want water conservation. I do not want to pass an ordinance if there's going to be a possibility that there's a violation, even if it's not going to be monitored or it's not going to be pursued by the city's staff. So as long as we're not running that risk, that's fine. But obviously, more transparency would have been a nice thing from the beginning.
Okay. So Marcy, if you could summarize and then I'll come around.
Obviously, I don't have the votes, which I understand and I respect you guys, of course. But I do want to make it very clear that when I spoke to Mark, he said that he never intended it to be something for these large common areas. He made a comment to me, and I'm, I would rather postpone until another meeting so we can clarify, but nonetheless, he said that the intention was for single-family homes and duplexes, not for large common areas, which is why he added that definition. When I told him, it was not just my concern. It was a concern of the landscape professionals. It was a concern of our HOAs. And yes, it could also be for our large developers, the developers that have Donald Ross Village or Avenir Commercial, because for them too, they have a lot of zones that are in common areas, not just in their little areas. And so those people that have single-family homes, yes, they'll be able to adhere to this language better. And the conservation, the goal was to use the water restricted, restriction conservations, like when we're in a drought, all the time. And that's mostly for like the Platts and the single-family homes. And I understand third-party conversations very well and I will assure you that there was zero sunshine law broken. And South Florida Water Management District, of all people, they are very much aware of the sunshine law. So talking to them is not an issue. They know when not to share things with everybody.
Yeah, and I spoke with Mark as well too, and he didn't mention anything about you. He said he did send an email to the city.
Yes, so I want to make that very clear. And West Palm Beach said that they were considering, they would consider a change. When I spoke to a councilperson in West Palm Beach, and Ibis didn't even know that West Palm Beach passed this ordinance, and now if we were to pass it, they would ask for theirs to be changed, to exclude it as well. So we're always on the cutting edge. I know we say, you know, we always compare ourselves to other municipalities when it's convenient for us, but we're not doing that with another ordinance that's coming up. So why do we have to, why can't we be unique? We're always on the cutting edge of ordinances. We're on the cutting edge. Palm Beach Gardens is unique. We're trailblazers. So just because other people...
We just don't want to be unique to that language you want to insert.
And that's fine. Just because other people...
All right. I'm just going to, I, let's, let's bring it, let's keep it.
Then that's all I'm, that's all I have to say.
You know, it was only a couple of months ago, we banned, I'm just talking about the conversation, con, the conservation initiative, sorry. Yeah, confetti. You can't get a cup at our golf course. There's no plastics or anything available. So this is just another trend with the language that's in place for conservation. I don't see the big deal of it.
And I'm happy with conservation. I love conservation. I just want to make it something that our communities can adhere to.
Of course. Now, I'm going to...
Let's call a vote.
I get to say something real quick. And then Max, do you want to say something before I close it out?
Well, you have, you have a substitution, you have a substitute motion that's been made and seconded. And if the substitute motion is not withdrawn, then you have to take a vote on the substitute motion first.
All right.
The substitute motion was a motion to adopt the ordinance with the amended language.
But it did not receive a second.
Yes, it did.
Hear that? Okay. All right. So...
So vote on that.
Yeah, let's vote on that. So I'll bring that back.
Or someone can, unless you want to remove that, that language.
Well, if I don't have three, then, then, I think you stopped a vote on it, don't you?
Just keep it clean and vote on it.
Let's just do all in.
Wait a minute. Wait, please. If you're going to, procedure is what I'm responsible for, so please, let's just, please let me do that. All right? So if, if, your choices are this, you can, either the second or can withdraw their second, the motion maker can withdraw their motion, or you have to call the question. If you vote on this, if you vote in favor, you're voting for the ordinance to be approved on second reading with the amended language. If you vote against it, you're voting for the ordinance, you're voting against that amendment.
Thank you for the clarification.
So I just wanted to be clear so that you know where you're at.
Appreciate that. This, councilmember who's second, would you like to withdraw your second?
Well, maybe, Marcy, would you like to cast the vote? Or do you want to withdraw?
You can cast the vote. All right. So let's...
You get to speak though.
Yeah, I will, I will say my quick piece and keep it calm and civil. I think the concern about this is also, aside from language, the definition of an ordinance. And there are two examples that I want to bring up when you start talking about being in violation. One is, for example, having alcohol in a park. I have a feeling if I went to a park with this, that you can't have it if it had, it does not have, it's water. But let's, if it had, if it had alcohol in it, it would actually require someone coming up and checking that to see if I was within the ordinance. Or when any of our councilmembers up here might go five miles over the speed limit, we're breaking the law, right? But there's, it happens, but you, there's, it happens. There's speeding sometimes. It's the same, it's similar. It's similar. I'm not saying it's the same. I think that the minutia required in this, it already goes beyond, if Ibis didn't even know about this being passed. If you go to the South Florida Water Management District website, it is nothing but pages and pages of education for community. So they really are trying to get the information out there. I was disappointed to hear Ibis didn't know about it. They're doing a great job and I am 100% for water conservation. So with that, I will go ahead and call a vote. So this vote, per Max's instruction, and you can correct me if I am wrong, is regarding the new motion with the new language.
That is correct. A vote in favor is a vote to approve the ordinance with the suggested amendment.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, aye?
Aye.
All right. So motion does not pass, three to two.
Two to three.
Two to three, thank you. And so do we bring it back again for the original ordinance?
That is correct. You would vote on the original motion.
All right. So let's go ahead and vote on the original motion. All in favor of ordinance nine twenty-two for second reading as written.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. Thank you. All right. We're moving on to ordinance ten twenty-two. Could the agenda coordinator please read the title?
Ordinance ten twenty-two. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter Seventy-eight Land Development Regulations at Section Seventy-eight dash one fifty-nine permitted uses, minor and major conditional uses and prohibited uses, by repealing subsection J sixty-one and re-adopting same as revised. Further amending Chapter Seventy-eight at Section Seventy-eight dash two twenty-two, Transit Oriented Development, TOD overlay district, to create the Transit Oriented Development, TOD overlay district, providing for permitted, prohibited, and conditional uses and development criteria. Further amending Chapter Seventy-eight at Section Seventy-eight dash seven fifty-one definitions, by adopting a new definition for active ground floor uses, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter Seventy-eight Land Development shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you so much. I'm going to open the hearing. Has anything changed since first reading?
No, Madam Mayor. There are no changes on ordinance ten. Staff is recommending approval.
Thank you very much, council. No? Okay. Don't need, no presentation required. And we have no comment cards, so we will proceed with closing the hearing. May I get a motion and a second to approve?
I'd like to make the motion to accept ordinance ten twenty-two on second reading.
I'll second.
Excellent. So any further discussion at all? No? All right. So hearing no further discussion, we'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes five zero. Thank you so much. All right. No, sorry. Just stay right there. Okay. So we're moving on to ordinance eleven twenty-two. Could the agenda coordinator please read the title?
Ordinance eleven twenty-two. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter Seventy-eight Land Development at Section Seventy-eight dash fifty-four Public Notice, by amending the public notice, by amending the public notice provisions set forth in Table Four, required public notice, and by repealing subsection B two and re-adopting same as revised, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you so much. All right. Let's open the hearing. Has anything changed since first reading?
No, Madam Mayor. No changes.
Thank you. Does anyone need a presentation tonight?
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? No one is wishing to speak. We do not have any comment cards, so we're going to proceed to close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second to approve?
Make a motion to approve ordinance eleven twenty-two.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. No further discussion, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much. Moving along to ordinance twelve. Could the agenda coordinator please read the title?
Ordinance twelve twenty-two. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter Seventy, amending Chapter Sixty-six Taxation at Article Six Economic Development Ad Valorem Tax Exemption, by repealing Section Sixty-six dash three ten Sunset Provision and re-adopting same as revised, to renew the City Council's authority to grant property tax exemptions to certain qualified businesses pursuant to state law and the city, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter Sixty-six Taxation shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you again. I'm going to open the hearing. Has anything changed since first reading?
No, ma'am.
Max? All right. Thank you. And so does anyone need a presentation regarding ordinance twelve? All right. So I don't have any comment cards. We're going to close the hearing. May I please get a motion and a second to approve?
No motion except ordinance twelve twenty-two on second reading.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All right. No discussion, it seems like, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And thank you for changing the language on that. Appreciate it.
Excellent. All right. Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Now, we are moving on to ordinance thirteen. Could the agenda coordinator please read the title?
Ordinance thirteen twenty-two. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter Two Administration, by repealing Section Two dash two ninety-four Bidding Threshold and re-adopting same as revised, in order to amend certain purchasing limits and remove certain reference to state law... in order to amend certain purchasing limits and remove certain reference to state law, providing that the remainder of Chapter two administration shall remain in full force and effect as previously enacted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you. Uh, this is out of character for me, but with all due respect, I'd like to, um, see if I can get a motion to entertain, I'm sorry, to postpone this. I'm not prepared to really delve into this. It, uh, I would appreciate it if my council would help me on this one. It's, um, this, I think, is impactful, and it's a heavy lift. I think I'd, I'd like a little more time to work on it. Between Florida League of Cities and TPA and everything else, there hasn't been enough time for me to feel good about, uh, voting on this, myself.
So you're asking to postpone ordinance thirteen, 2020 until the next-
Yes, please. If I could get a motion in a second.
If anyone agrees with that.
I'll make a motion to postpone.
I would really appreciate it. Is that okay, Max?
Yes, we're gonna postpone it to a, a times, a times, hold on. Just postpone it to next month's meeting.
My apologies, thank you.
We'll just postpone it to next month, if that be the motion and the second to postpone it to next month.
I appreciate it, I just don't feel comfortable voting, thank you.
I'll make a motion, I'll refrain, or change my motion to, uh, postpone until next month.
I'll second it. Thank you, sorry guys, thank you.
Sorry.
We need a call question.
Let's call the question. All right, so, um, all in, let's see, blah, 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 blah. All in favor, yeah, I'm sorry, all in favor of postponing ordinance thirteen, 2022?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes five zero. Moving on to ordinance fourteen, second reading, could you please read the title?
Ordinance fourteen, 2022. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending the City of Palm Beach Gardens budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, 2021, and ending September thirtieth, 2022 inclusive, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you so much, I'm going to open the hearing. Has anything changed since first reading?
No, Madam Mayor, no changes.
Hello, Alan, thank you very much. All right, we don't have any cards on this, so we are going to close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second to approve, please?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance fourteen, 2022.
Any further discussion or questions for Alan? All right, thank you so much.
Great job, Alan. Thank you for that.
All in favor? Any opposed? No, motion passes five zero, thank you very much. All right, moving along to Resolution sixty-five, 2022. Could we please read the title?
Resolution sixty-five, 2022. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a site plan amendment to the clubhouse and recreation site to construct a new 93,155 square foot clubhouse building and parking lot within the Frenchman's Creek Planned Community Development, PCD, located on Tournament Drive, internal to the Frenchman's Creek, PCD, which is located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Donald Ross Road and Alternate A1A, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date, and for other purposes.
Thank you very much, I'm going to open the hearing. Do we have any ex parte on Resolution sixty-five, the Frenchman's Creek Clubhouse?
I do. I have an ex parte, I spoke to Jane Feinstein, Bernie Paul Selly, um, Diane, the new president, and, um, the new manager, Miles.
I had the same ex parte, I spoke to the same folks, gosh, probably in June. I can't remember the date, I have it written down somewhere, but it's been a while, yeah.
Okay, all right, that's it, so let's go ahead. We have Brian Donahue from Insight Studio for the presentation, please.
Uh, thank you, good evening, I'm Brian Donahue with Insight Studio, we're the land planners and landscape architects working with Frenchman's Creek. On their project, I'm joined by, uh, Bernie Paul Selly, the assistant manager, Miles Tucker, the general manager, and Santiago Gonzalez is the, um, facilities director at Frenchman's Creek. We're excited to be here before you tonight. This has been a long process for Frenchman's Creek, they've been working on trying to come up with a plan for a new clubhouse, and we're finally there, so this is the last step, so we're excited to present to you. Uh, we're amending the previously approved PCD site plan for Frenchman's Creek. Um, the, the clubhouse has been demolished at this point, so they're gonna be building a new 93,000 square foot clubhouse in the same place, basically. About 12,000 square feet of outdoor dining, uh, reconfiguration of the site for the recreation amenities, more efficient parking layout, uh, new courts, pickleball, um, tennis courts. For orientation purposes, Frenchman's Creek is located on the southeast corner of Alternate A1A and Donald Ross Road. Uh, there, on the screen, you see highlighted in the center the clubhouse parcel. Uh, zoom in there, so the, the red boundary that shows on the screen generally defines the overall clubhouse parcel and amenity tract. Uh, the shaded area is the area that we're impacting with this application. Uh, the portion to the south there, that's the existing fitness and spa building and pool, that will remain. Um, and everything else that you see highlighted will be impacted. Uh, here's an aerial view from the south, um, looking to the north of the existing building, showing the area that will be impacted. And here's a view from the north, looking south of the existing clubhouse. A view from the south, again, from the golf course, looking to the north. This is the previously approved site plan, just the, what the city has on file, black and white version of it. This is the proposed clubhouse, and I have a colored graphic of that to give a little better explanation. So the clubhouse does go back two stories in the same location, uh, similar to how it sets up today. Uh, you'll enter on the second floor, you'll go up the hill to the valet, enter on the second floor. Parking area is flanked on both sides, uh, new courts, uh, ten pickleball courts and ten tennis, ten new tennis courts, four resurfaced tennis courts. As I mentioned, the fitness facility on the southeast side of the property stays. And then you have a large cart parking area on the southwest portion of the property, uh, and then the golf course is not impacted. This is a view of the new entry procession, so nice new landscaping, majule date palms, lining the entryway up to the new portico share. Uh, new modernized, somewhat transitional architectural style, so kind of bringing Frenchman's Creek into the more, more current, uh, look with the architectural style, uh, new landscaping, new drop-off portico share area. Here's a view from the rear of the building, um, looking from the golf course. This is a view from the west side, from the cart parking areas, you can see it's gonna be heavily landscaped. And a view from the tennis, um, portion of the, of the site, looking to the east side of the clubhouse. Here are the architectural elevations, north elevation on the top of the screen, the south elevation on the bottom of the screen, uh, west elevation and an east elevation there. And the architectural floor plans, I won't get into too much detail, but the primary function of the upper level is member dining area, so the east side is, is primarily ballroom, large functions. Uh, the top of the screen is the, the sports bar, which is an outdoor dining venue, and then the, the left side there is more private dining and private grill room, and then you've got some kitchen space. And then on the lower level, you've got your men's and women's locker rooms, your golf, uh, tennis, pro shop. Uh, a lot of back-of-house operations down there, office space administration. Uh, and sustainability efforts, so there are several, uh, sustainability efforts that have been made with the application. Um, energy-efficient mechanical and HVA systems will be, uh, incorporated into the building. Uh, there are two EV charging stations that are incorporated for electrical cars and potentially more that may be added over the years. Uh, we're providing an ample amount of golf cart parking, which is one of the primary modes of transportation within the community, so that'll give opportunities for more people to use their golf carts. A lot of native plant species, uh, to reduce the irrigation requirements, and LED lighting, uh, throughout the building and throughout the site. Uh, the project was approved by a majority, uh, vote of the community membership in November of 2021, and it was unanimously approved, or recommended approval, at the, the hearing last month from the planning and zoning board. Thank you, I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you so much, do we, I, thank you very much, so I think Olivia, you're here for staff, do we have a staff presentation as well?
The information would be duplicative at this point, staff does recommend approval of Resolution sixty-five, there are no requested waivers with this petition.
Oh, okay.
And it was approved as the applicant mentioned, it's owning board.
Okay, excellent, great, looks beautiful. So let's move along then, uh, we don't have any comment cards, and so I'm going to close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second to approve, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution sixty-five, 2022.
I'll second. Excellent, all right, Marcy, you made the motion, you want to go ahead? And talk about it a little bit?
I think it's gorgeous, I've been waiting to see this for a very long time, since the first time I was on the council, so. I know they've talked about it, I know they've planned for this for many, many years, and I know all the residents are very excited to see this come to fruition, so. Great job, the design is beautiful, and I can't wait to come to the grand opening of this new facility.
Thank you.
All right, other council members care to speak? Rochelle?
I, I have a question, it may have to go to Bernie, I'm not, if, I'm not sure. Um, I, I'm excited for Frenchman's, you guys waited a really long time to, to get here, so I'm, I'm excited for everyone. And, um, I know you added extra parking spaces to make things easier. My question is, with, um, the ballroom and the entertainment spaces, how often are they used by outsiders coming in? Can you rent the, the ballroom? Or is all of the ballroom and entertainment activity done from the residents?
I was gonna say, hey Bernie, we're gonna have you, uh, get sworn in real quick, I think.
I'm Bernie Paul Selly from Frenchman's Creek.
Were you sworn in?
No.
Okay, let's go ahead and take care of that real quick.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
And name, name and address.
Bernie Paul Selly, uh, 4518, Elysium Drive.
Thank you.
Um, which, the Frenchman's Creek is structured as a property and as an association, is because of that, we cannot allow outside, um, people to use the facility. So only, the facilities can only be used by members, the guests, and families. So we have no outside outings, no outside weddings or anything like that. All the facilities are used strictly by our members.
Okay. The, the reason I was asking that question was to see how many of the, the cars or the golf carts would be there, or how many extra cars would be coming in, but there won't be many. So the number of charging stations you have is, is two, that, are they double-sided, that's four cars?
They are, it'd be for four cars, and, you know, in the future, they've, they're certainly open to adding more as more members have electrical vehicles.
Yeah, most of your members, if one of the few communities where, where the members really do use the golf carts.
Right, right.
So, um, it's, it's not as much of an issue for you guys as it is in other places.
All right, moving on down, Marc?
Congratulations. I don't know how many times the cops had to get called out for members fighting each other out there, but, uh, gratefully, you guys are gonna, you know, uh, have a wonderful community and a wonderful building, and that matches everything else going on in our city, so I'm proud of you guys, and I'm excited to see the, the, the community just improve. Good job.
All right, Carl.
How big is this place?
How big's the building?
Yeah.
Uh, interior, about 93,000 square feet, and then there's about 12,000 square foot of outdoor patio space.
Okay, so you have no idea how easy we all got off tonight. There's been developers that would be up there for two hours on this, and then we'd go after them on charging stations for another two hours, and it would be Saturday afternoon before we got out of here. So, if my council members are good with the charging stations, I usually, um, champion, but if my team's happy with the charging stations, your presentation was streamlined, I appreciate that, 'cause I don't like a lot of chitter chatter. We get to it, and we, we've already seen it, we're educated in it, so I appreciate that. I'm gonna support it, looks like everybody's happy, and football starts in about forty-five minutes.
No, 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 no.
Yes, it does. It does, every Thursday.
Oh, my goodness.
All right, anyway, I like it, well done.
Thank you.
And, um, I'm good with it, thanks.
Thank you, Carl. Um, yeah, we, we, we do, we do love sustainability around here, so thank you so much. But yes, since you're having your residents who probably have super, superchargers in their garages ready to go, it makes sense. Um, the only thing I want to do is congratulate you guys, uh, congratulate your team on having grace during this process. Um, I've gotten to go out and see what, what you were working with the last year or two, and, and it still felt like Frenchman's, which is really hard when you're in a tent, but you guys did it. So, um, thank you, and thank you for working so well with our staff, and, uh, we look forward to visiting. We won't have a wedding or anything like that, but we'll just come and visit, and then we'll leave, so, let's, uh-
Marc and I would like to visit on the golf course.
I'm sure we can arrange that.
But, but not on a Thursday evening, obviously.
And we don't need to wait for this to be done, either.
Let's call it, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion passes five zero, congratulations.
Thanks so much, have a great evening.
Moving on to Resolution sixty-six, 2022, could my agenda coordinator please read the title?
Resolution sixty-six, 2022. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a site plan for a 250-unit residential town home subdivision on approximately 32.83 acres within the Town Center District, Parcel B, of the Avenir Planned Community Development, PCD, master plan that is generally located on the north side of Northlake Boulevard, east of Breakview Boulevard, west of Bay Hill Drive, and south of Beeline Highway, as more particularly described herein, providing waivers, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date, and for other purposes.
Thank you, Renata. All right, so I'm going to open the hearing, please. Let's, uh, declare ex parte, Marcy, do you have one? Any ex parte?
Just Rosa Schechter.
All right, and Carl, do you have any ex parte?
Negative.
Marc?
Nope.
Rochelle?
As much as I tried to get in touch with Rosa and connect, we never did, so no.
Okay, and I, I don't know about this, I think the last time I spoke with Rosa, it was not about this at all. So tonight, we have Ken Tuma from Urban Design Studio. Mr. Tuma, have you been sworn in?
I have, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, Ken Tuma of Urban Design Studio, and I believe the football game starts at eight fifteen, so we're down to twenty-nine minutes for me to keep moving very quickly, uh, council member Woods. So I, so just to kind of kick things off this evening, I just, I, I eliminated fifteen slides from the, from the presentation that was in front of the planning board, uh, sorry, the planning and zoning board, but just real quick. What's in front of you this evening is Avenir Town Homes. This is 250 townhomes that are on the, that is part of the north part of the Town Center. If you recall, you approved a Town Center a few months ago. The Town Center is really three phases, the first two phases are the commercial component, where you approved the, uh, proposed grocery store, and then also the main street that goes up and down, which is called Premier Street. And then the second part will be the second phase of that Town Center, which is the office buildings, which are down the road a bit. And then the third phase, which is what if, which is in front of you this evening, are the townhomes, which bring the life and viability to the center. There are 250 homes proposed, and they're tied to the main street. I have about ten slides, I'm gonna go very quickly this evening, 'cause we have two items. Avenir Pod 20 is next. So, you're all familiar with the site, it's located at the north end of the Town Center. Uh, Avenir was approved back in 2016, and the Town Center, the commercial component, was approved here in 2022. The subject cited, the subject request that is in front of you, there are four items within that. It's overall site plan approval, but there are architectural renderings, because the townhomes are incorporated in the design, architectural renderings are part of it, the site landscaping is part of the approval, and there are five waivers. Those waivers are waivers primarily to the design guidelines. So the site plan, just quickly walking through the site plan, this is it, kind of in the big picture of what's happening in the surrounding area. You approve site plan number one, which are the residential homes all around, where we have lots of residents living, and homes have been moved into. And then this is the Town Center, which you approved a few months ago, and then finally, this is the townhomes. A little bit more blow up, just so you can kind of see how everything's relating together. This here is the Premier Street, if I can. This here is the, is the main street or the Premier Street, and you'll note that it goes right down the center of the Town Center, but then it also goes to the main entrance of the townhomes. And then the road that goes through the townhomes continues through straight, and then it terminates within a lake pavilion. So the idea was to kind of make that nice, great connection. The other thing that this slide shows is the interconnectivity between the two of these green spaces, are actual walkways and sidewalk connections, so people can walk both from their units, but also through the community into the Town Center. These are the large green spaces that you approved within the Town Center. And then also, we had the main pedestrian area that went all the way through the entire Town Center. So that's how it all kind of ties together. I'm gonna walk you through a little bit more specific details on this site plan. The site plan has three access points. Um, and the overall access points here identified on the, by the red arrows on the screen in front of you, 250 homes. Now, there are two types of product, well, interesting enough, there are two builders on this site, so there are two, uh, so there are two architects in the audience, who will be able, are two different architectural styles in the audience, who'll be able to talk to you a little bit about the architecture, but the, um, what we have, though, from a design standpoint, there's two types of products. There's a front road, front-load townhome, which is your standard townhome, where you have the garage and the door on one side. And then there are rear-load townhomes, where you have a front of the building, and then in the back, you have the garage, kind of like what you see at Abacoa or Evergreen, where you have the large house, that kind of design concept. So this is not a gated community, different than everywhere, everywhere else in Avenir. There's full access to the entire project, there are eight-foot wa- sidewalks coming down the main road, making the connection. The roads are a little more narrower to create this nice streetscape as proposed. streetscape, as proposed. Here are the entry features. The first entry feature on the screen in front of you is the main entry feature, significant entry feature. It's about forty-five feet long. Of course, it has U-laid on it, because it's part of Avenueir. There are brackets and gazebo features. And then another common theme here is this powder-coated railing. You'll note that through the entire project, that that powder-coated railing is consistent throughout the entire theme of the entire project. Mr. Cangelin designed that. He's in the audience this evening. It's been a pretty cool design theme to keep it through the entire project. So that was the main entrance. There are also entrances at each ends, on the left and the right-hand side, coming into the project. This is Coconut Boulevard here on the left, and this is Town Center Access Road here on the right, and this is the project entrance sign. It'll have the project name, then kind of this railing, this powder-coated railing connection, and then this lower level of landscaping. The final entry features are the ones that define the project. So it was said a little earlier, two builders. Left-hand side, or west side, is one builder. Right-hand side is a different builder. So it'll be a project name for each one of those, and you can see the project sign wall in front of you. The center street, kind of the main drag through the community, coming off the main drive of the Town Center. So here, identified it, you'll note that it terminates on an eight, on the lake pavilion area. There are eight-foot sidewalks, and it connects all the way here. But this creates a nice streetscape view of a focus, kind of on the pedestrian view. This is actually a view of the town, along Town Center Drive, which is this roadway right here. That view, you can see how the buildings, these rear-loaded buildings, have the nice streetscape, where you can see in the screen in front of you, you can see the, there's a knee wall, there's gates, there's sconces, and then you have this nice two-story architecture with the front door on one side, and the back is where the garages are. The same thing on the other side of the road, the difference, a little bit different style of architecture, but you can see the, how the houses, how the front doors are fronting, and then behind it are the, are the garages. The intent of this is to show that the main street will have these buildings that are brought closer to the road. Community amenities, there are significant community amenities. First thing, where we start the conversation about community amenities on the west side of the project, is a rental project. So there's a community leasing area. The east side is a for-sale townhome project. So identified here on the left-hand side, in the red oval, is a community center with a pool. I have blow-ups and details. I'll show you in a few minutes. Then we have the yoga garden, this kind of open green space that's intended to be a gathering space for the folks within the rental area, to allow for them to have both yoga classes and other items. And then here is a picnic area. We have a children's playground on the east side, and there's also a pavilion and covered, shade-covered play equipment there. And then there's also another multipurpose lawn with different activities programmed for it. And here are a few other multipurpose areas. And then finally, the lake pavilion at the termination of the main road. So the lakeside pavilion is a pretty significant feature. It's important. It's kind of the idea of it is to be the termination of that street, the termination of the main street of Avenueir. So you pull up, you, the way we have it designed, you'll notice it like perfectly lines up with the road, so your eye and your visual corridor go straight through it. You'll notice that there's standing seam, standing seam metal roofing, which is a copper roofing that you see throughout Avenueir. And then we have the U-laid stone columns all over the gazebo structure. This is a roofed area, and these are gazebo structures. And of course, there's standard street furniture, like there is throughout Avenueir. The community center on the west side, it's two-five-hundred square feet. It includes both a swimming pool, leasing office, business room, the typical menus that you would expect in a high-end community as part of Avenueir. Children's play area on the right-hand side, identifying the model of equipment that's being proposed, play equipment. There'll be swings and picnic tables, general, and other items. Parking provided, always an important item when you have townhomes, right? So townhomes, there's always a question, how's it going to park? The requirement, as you know, in the City of Palm Beach Gardens, the parking code is one parking spot per bedroom, plus five percent for guests. The code that generates eight-hundred-and-sixty-four spaces. What's being provided is nine-hundred-and-ninety-four spaces, with one-hundred-and-ten on-street parking spaces identified in the areas in red, plus there's additional on-street parking here along the Town Center Access Road that's not counted in those numbers. So this is significantly parked for a townhome, because everyone knows that sometimes more than one or two people show up for a weekend party or something like that. So, architecture, keeping the train moving. Architecture. So there are two kind of styles of architecture, all under one common theme. The architectural style, generally speaking, is coastal modern. Peter has taken that one direction. He's taken it more towards a tropical look, and then the eastern side has gone more towards a coastal look. So let me walk you through some of the architectural styles in a bit more detail. First, I said earlier, the project is divided east and west. The red line is the divider. The west, the left-hand side, or the west side, is the one we'll go through first. There are twenty-three buildings there, or a hundred-and-thirty-four units. So the western parcel, there are sixteen front-loaded buildings, which is more the traditional townhome, where you see the door and the garages in the front, and there are seven rear-loaded, where the front door is in one side, and the garage door is in the rear. So this is the front-load design on that parcel, kind of some unique features of it. First, what sticks out to me, and I'm gonna blow up in a little bit more detail for you here. This is one unit. This is what one of the two-story unit looks like. It's a townhome. First thing, on this side, you'll notice that the garages are single-car garages, but it's really a two-car garage unit, but each one of them have a sending, single operating door. You'll notice kind of that tropical-modern design. You'll see Peter has created these brackets. He has these roofs. He's got the unique stucco and the scored stucco, and these metal awnings here. So he's taken this a little bit more towards tropical, but it has overhangs and other aluminum brackets, and then the flat roof tile is important to his design. So that's what the front-loaded building looks like. The rear-loaded building on the left-hand side here, you can see the, you can see what it looks like from the front, while the trees are in the way, but you can generally get an idea of what it looks like in the front. These are the columns, the stucco columns, the brackets that are being proposed, the aluminum rafters, that common theme, which I missed on the last slide, kind of that railing that was consistent with the entries, so that railing is consistent with the entries. So that's what the rear-loaded looks like. On the western, on the eastern parcel, just a little bit different design. You'll notice that the stack stone's a little taller. There's deeper brackets. It has, it has these tower elements on both ends. So this is the rear-load on the east side again, all within the same design features, scored stucco, brackets, lots of glass. Now, what's unique here, and I'll show you in more detail in a second, are the separation of the public-private space on the, on the front of the building. There's these walls that separate the public and private space. And this is the front-load, meaning that the doorway is here. You'll see the stone. They also have metal shed roofs for the lower, above the garages. Now, they have a two, a standard two-car garage with a two, with a regular one-car door. You'll notice the awnings, and then also these, these tower features creating some unique roofline movement. So knee walls and separation walls. Important part of this project is kind of create this separation of both public and private spaces. So along the red line, there is knee walls on both sides. And those knee walls, in this case, it's that metal railing here, and then you'll notice the thirty-four, thirty-five-inch coquina column. And then in front of each unit, there's a gate, and then there's a sconce light, so you have your kind of own public-private space as you look through those units. Along Town Center Drive, which is here in red, we have a different style wall. That wall's a, is a solid stucco raw. It's a thirty-four-inch knee wall. Same thing, has a coquina columns, has the sconces, creates that public and private separation. Over here, on the left side, this is in front of the future hotel that will have a more standard six-foot-high wall, and also along the west side, will have the same setup that is throughout all of Avenueir on Coconut Drive and the main roads, where you have the forty-foot adjacent to Coconut. You then have an additional fifteen-foot landscape buffer, and you have a wall, and then you have the residential units. Landscaping, I'm gonna go through this very quickly. We've met all the requirements. We're providing a significant amount of landscaping. The main entry is a majule sequence going into the project, and then the more standard trees that you've seen throughout Avenueir, and I think most of you have probably driven out there, I think the landscaping's coming in really nice, and it'll be consistent with that design theme. Waivers. There are five waivers this evening. The waivers are really a lot of words on the, on the screen in front of you. I'm gonna jump to what the waivers are and show you graphically. The first waiver is a waiver to the design guidelines to allow secondary streets to have full access to the main road. When, when the book was written for design standards, the thought process was that this would be a write-in and write-out only on both of these. And when we got to the ultimate design, it made much more sense to have a full intersection at both places. So that's the request for waiver number one. Waiver number two is a waiver to the blocks, the block structure. There are minimum, maximum blocks, block sizes that are allowed. And first thing, one of the biggest, the longest block, this is the width, the longest block we're asking for a waiver for, is the block along the waterway, a significant water. When we, when we laid it out, you know, no one really knew this was gonna be a waterway all to the front, but we may basically have block, and it's broken up by different areas, but it's a longer, it's longer than what's allowed by code. And then here, you could see some areas where it's shorter than what's allowed by code. You know, from my opinion, and I know your staff recommends this also, I don't think we could have put another road in there to make the lot, lots any smaller. It's got a significant amount of transportation elements. The third waiver is a waiver to the rear. The original approval for the Town Center, we didn't know if it was gonna be commercial there. We didn't know if it was gonna be residential. It had the setback being fifteen feet. We're requesting that the setback along the rear be ten feet. And just, just for a little bit of memory, the landscaping, you approved a significant amount of landscaping within the litoral shelves. It's part of site plan number one. All this landscaping was part of it. So basically, the request is to shrink that from fifteen feet to ten feet. Also, when the design guidelines were written, no one knew that there'd be a lake there also. This is the question you might want to ask, is, well, what's a separation from the houses to the north? It's anywhere from a hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred feet, depending where you are. Waiver number four is a waiver to, to allow for seven parallel spots in a row instead of five. Great design idea to limit it to five parallel spaces in a row, but this is a pretty small area, and we believe, and again, your staff has recommended approval, that it would be better to get a little bit more parking there, to get the two additional spots in front of those, to allow for that additional parking, just because the length of it's not very long. The fifth waiver is a waiver for street trees. Now, I want to assure you, we're having the street trees before I start this conversation. The, with the requirement is that we have to have a street tree, one every thirty feet. We're gonna have that, but what's going to happen is it's gonna be on the lots, because we brought those buildings to the front, right, so they have those knee walls, and then, and then the building in the back. So instead of having the street tree here in front of the knee wall, it's actually gonna be behind it. So all the trees are gonna be in place. Again, your staff recommends approval, and I hope I got done in time for football this evening. I have one more item.
Don't listen to me.
Have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Don't rush. Please, city business.
What do you mean, don't listen to me?
Don't listen. To that part. We listen to everything else.
That's fair.
Everything but that.
That was quick.
All right, thank you. Do we, thank you so much, Ken. Do we have a staff present, a staff presentation?
No staff presentation. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 66 and all waivers requested. It too was voted unanimously by Planning and Zoning.
Excellent. All right, thank you so much. We don't have any comment cards, anyone wishing to speak, so let's go ahead and close this hearing. May I get a motion in a second to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I will listen to that motion. I'll second.
Thank you very much.
I'll be happy to second it.
Thank you. All right, let's, let's chat about it. So Carl?
I've got nothing to say about it. It was a beautiful presentation, as always. I am excited for Avenueir to continue to be moving forward. Staff does an excellent job. My team's gonna approve it. I'm on board with it. There you go.
Well said. All right. Yes, it's all right. All right, so let's, let's come on down the line. Marc, let's, let's hear what you have to say.
Two questions. The, the waiver for the ingress egress on Coconut, that's probably gonna be the busiest road. Is there gonna be any intersection there? Like, it's an intersection, but there's not gonna be any light or anything like that, is it?
There, there won't be, but there's a roundabout directly to the north, and a roundabout directly to the south that will slow traffic up to allow that gap time to allow people to get in and out.
Okay. And what's the ratio of rental versus purchase?
Question, council member. Let me get the numbers. It was a hundred-and-thirty-four to, yeah, sixty, forty.
Sixty, forty, sixty percent rental and forty percent ownership? Roughly that? Okay. And do we know what the rental rates? I guess it'll just be dependent on what happens, right?
Yep.
That's fine.
I don't know the answer to that, sorry.
Thank you.
Rochelle?
Two questions as well. The builder for the rental units and the builder for the home units, do we?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and answer one of those questions, and the other one is still in consideration. There are some confidentiality agreements. The builder on the west side will be FCI, which is Florida Crystal's apartment wing, FCI.
Okay, but we don't know the other one.
The east side, there's some confidentiality agreements, so we'll, we'll know the answer soon enough, but they put a lot of effort into this.
And when the builder comes on on the other side, the fact that we've already approved their, what it's gonna look like and all is, they're, they're, have to be willing to go along with that, right?
Correct. And if there are any significant changes, guess where we come back to, and you get to listen to me talk again.
On that side, the purchase side, I assume, being that there is no clubhouse and pool, that they will be using the main clubhouse and pool for Avenueir, is that correct?
Both communities have access to the eastern west, the eastern Avenueir Recreation Center.
Okay, but they won't have access to the rental complex pool?
Pool, they will not have access to the pool. That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Good questions. Marcy?
Looks great. Thank you. You actually asked some of my questions, so thank you for that. Question on the driveway width for the, I think it's the rear-loaded ones, or the length, not the width, but the length of it. I just wanted to make sure there was one, the long street in the center looked like it was a lot shorter than the rest of them, and I'm guessing that's the rear-loaded driveways.
I think you're asking about...
And it was hard to read on the, on the actual plan when I zoomed in. Just making sure that, I know how sometimes rear-loaded driveways, they stack into the access road?
Twenty by twenty.
Perfect. It just looks shorter than the rest of the driveways.
Oh, right. Okay, so yes, because of variation, the minimum is twenty, the maximum is actually thirty-point-seven.
Yeah.
So those variations, the buildings have variation in them.
Right. Some looked perfectly long, and then some looked a lot smaller. That's why I was asking. Perfect. And then I'm absolutely in support of the waiver for the access, because it actually spreads out the traffic a lot, and it, for me, makes for a much better design, a great design. Thank you. And it's nice to see the two Tumas here.
Thank you so much. Great questions up here. So loving the connectivity. It's extraordinary. I think the folks that are going to live there will probably not go very far, as we know, most trips are about three miles. So the ability to take a stroll, or a golf cart, or a bike to get to the general center area, whether you're going to the pool, or to the yoga area, or, golly, I think we're all gonna be moving in. This one sounds great. And I also especially like the full access to Coconut with the traffic calming leading into it. That's extraordinarily important. Looks great. Thank you so much for your presentation. So with that, we will take it to vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes five zero. Congratulations. Thank you. All right, moving on to Resolution 67, 2022. If the agenda coordinator could please read the title.
Resolution 67, 2022. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a site plan for a one-hundred-and-forty-four-lot, single-family residential subdivision on approximately fifty-one-point-one-six acres, more or less, known as Pod Twenty, within the residential district, Parcel A, of the Avenueir Planned Community Development, PCD, that is generally located on the north side of Northlake Boulevard, east of Grapeview Boulevard, west of Bay Hill Drive, and south of Beeline Highway, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date, and for other purposes.
Thank you so much. All right, let's open this hearing. Do we have ex parte for Resolution 67, the site plan, Parcel A? Marcy?
Rosa Schechter.
All right. Rochelle?
Yeah.
All right, we, Marc is in absentia, so Carl?
Negative.
All right, and same here. So let's move on. Hi, Ken.
Hi, good evening.
You've been sworn in?
I have. Good evening. Ken Tuma with Urban Design Studio, 610 Climato Street, West Palm Beach, Florida, 33401. This is the next in a series of pods at Avenueir. There's been a lot of activity, as you know, in Avenueir, and a lot of homes being constructed. This is Pod Number Twenty, which is located at the southeast corner of the, of the intersection of Panther National Drive and Avenueir, Panther Boulevard, Panther National and Avenueir Drive. I'm gonna go very quickly through this. There are a hundred-and-forty-four units. It's very consistent with what you've seen before. There is no architecture this evening. There is a condition that when... evening. There is a condition that when a builder comes on board, which is apparently is Colter Homes, as you'll see Mr. Morton in the audience, will come before you with an application for architecture on the site. So the subject site here identified in red, the oval, we've been, those of you who've been with Avenir a long time know we call this Mickey Mouse because of the ears. So we're building that Pod Number Twenty is the next one. This is the design. There are two styles of lots proposed on this. There are sixty-nine, sixty-five-foot wide lots, and seventy-five, fifty-five-foot lots. They're all one hundred and thirty feet deep. The site plan, the site plan which is on the screen in front of you, has an entrance point directly adjacent to the GL parcel or Pod Fifteen. The entrance point is here. It is a gated community. Along the frontage, along Avenir Drive, there's the standard buffers, which is the fifteen foot, the forty foot from the road, the fifteen foot and the wall, and then you'll see you come in. It is a gated community. Some other key components, which I'll walk you through in a little bit, will show that there is a bridge here that makes a walking connection between Panther, between here and the south side, allowing people to walk all the way through. So I'm going to walk you through some details real quick. First thing, project entrances on the screen are the arrows in red. These are the main entrance. So there's a main entrance here, but there's also a similar main entrance off of Panther National Boulevard. And then this part, this entrance point here is an egress only. This ingress point references an emergency ingress point. So there are three axes, or there are three points of ingress, excuse me, two points of ingress, three points of egress. This is the profile for the buffer adjacent to Avenir and Panther National. Again, a six-foot-high wall, significant landscaping in the front. The walkway, depending on where you are, it's either eight foot or twelve foot, depending on which side of the road. Along one side, it's twelve, and the other, it's eight. And then you'll see the rest of the design. Community amenities. Here you can see the pergola being proposed, again, of course, with the U light, it's an U light, and then having some stacked stone or scored stone on the bottom, the brushed aluminum B gazebo, a beam gazebo. Male kiosk located in the area in red. It also has several playground equipment with swings and other items. The bridge connection, this is a walking bridge, it connects kind of the disconnected part through the wetland. This is actually one of the most beautiful wetlands on the site. If you get a chance to get out there, this is, if you wanted to buy a home, this would be number two. The next one, Pod Eighteen, would be number one with like this nine hundred-foot view. This has a six hundred-foot view, and I'm going to show you a few pictures. It's really beautiful. Some additional features such as pocket parks throughout the community. So what we did is we went out and took just a few pictures to kind of see what it would look like from different spots. If you're standing where that red arrow is, this is a view of the preservation area immediately adjacent to that arrow. And then here, if you're looking southeast, you can kind of get a view of what the conservation area is going to look like. And then here's a view looking northeast. Just a nice, large, beautiful area that has lots of natural plants. Landscaping, landscaping is consistent with the balance of the Avenir projects. The trees are gumbo-limbo, southern live oaks, significant amount of landscape points provided. Ladies and gentlemen, there are no waivers, and that's my presentation for this evening. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Wow, yeah, wow, indeed. All right, thank you very much. Do we have a staff presentation?
No staff presentation tonight, ma'am.
All right, thanks, Brett. And I don't have any comment cards, so let's go ahead and close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second to approve?
I'll make a motion on resolution sixty-seven, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second. Thanks, Marcy. All right, so let's chat and discuss. Any questions? Carl, you made the motion. You want to go first?
Yeah. Ken, thank you. I like to goof around a little bit sometimes, and it's just, you know, lets people know we're really real. However, I do remember a couple pods ago, and I don't remember, it could have been six months ago. I like the connectability with the sidewalks, but on this particular slide, one before that. Anyway, it looked like where it connects here, where the entrance to the development is, equal and opposite of that, there's another development over here in the gray area, that it looks like the sidewalks are larger here. The reason why I'm asking that is, remember how big our sidewalks were a couple pods ago? Are we staying with that same thing? I think they were ten to twelve feet wide and with the golf court, because sometimes, sometimes your presentation, the sidewalks look larger. These look relatively, relative to the drawing. So how large are these sidewalks?
Councilmember Woods, at the entrances, we've been consistent. It's an eight-foot-wide sidewalk that then will connect to either the twelve-foot multi-use path or the eight-foot sidewalk, depending what side of either Avenir Drive, Coconut, or Panther National Boulevard you're on. So at this point here, the driveways do align, and then sidewalks on both sides are eight feet wide.
So I just never asked a question before. So it's the same theme throughout?
Yes.
Because sometimes they just look different. I get different slides look different. But that was the only question I have. I love it. Thank you, Ken. Excited for you guys.
Good question, Carl. Mark?
No questions. Looks great. Congratulations.
Thank you. Rochelle?
No questions. It looks wonderful, so I'm good.
Marcy?
Just a few. I love the boardwalk over the wetland. I think that's going to be used a lot, and the residents are really going to like that. It's a nice feature. What is the stacking distance to the guardhouse? Actually, mostly, not the one with the roundabout in it, the one on Avenir Drive. And then also, how do the residents gain access? Is it a key fob? Is it a?
I'll address the latter while we're looking. I know, one thing I know for sure is we're not requesting a waiver to the stacking, so it's meeting the minimum requirement of the city. In regards to key fob, it will be, the proposal here will be some form of key fob, or visio system, or, but it, but there is not, it's not a man-gated entrance point.
Okay. And the picnic area that has the benches, it was hard to see on the site plan. Is there a fence for the rear lots that face that, where the picnic area and the benches are?
Yes. All residential lots that abut common spaces have a four-foot black aluminum fence to delineate the public from private space. And then to just go back quickly to answer your question on the stacking, off of Avenir Drive, there's a hundred feet of stacking to the call box, which is persistent with code, and there's also two lanes, so one for guests, one for residents.
Okay, great. And the, it was hard to see that on the plan, I saw fences around and noted on a lot of them, and then that area I didn't notice the fence, and it could have been just because of the dash line that was on the site plan. Very nice. Thank you very much. I appreciate the design, and it's going to be a nice product.
All right. So I just, I'm always so impressed to see the natural areas worked into people's homes. It's extraordinary with over twenty-four hundred acres of restored natural area, not just overgrown swampland, but actually restored to its natural area. It's wonderful, and it's keeping our city at our fifty-one percent that we're beholden for green space as well. So thank you for that. Love the walkway. Can't wait to see it. So I don't really have any questions, but thank you. Excellent product. We look forward to seeing what happens next. Let's call it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion passes five zero. Thank you all so much. All right, thank you, guys. Resolution seventy-nine, if we could have my, if we could have the title read, please.
Resolution seventy-nine, two thousand and twenty-two. A resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, declaring that the city of Wachula, Hardy County, Florida, is a sister city, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you. Ron, do you have anything further you might want to share about it? All right. I feel like I'm asking for a lot of indulgence tonight. So our goal is thirty-five thousand dollars.
That's correct. We have ten thousand donation from Christ Fellowship Church, and the fifteen thousand from Callaway.
So we need ten more thousand dollars in order to take care of this community.
Correct.
All right. So begging favor of council, I'd like you guys to consider the possibility if we have the funds to do this. I think it's pretty extraordinary to watch the previous sister city give money to the next sister city for the catalyst for that kind of good in the state. I think that's a worthy investment. I don't know how that works, but I wanted to see what you guys might think about having Ron or Max look into that possibility.
Where would the fund, what line item would it come from? What budget line would it come from? Council or from some other?
Generally speaking, you have money in your council budget to make these decisions, and you do it all the time with...
Yeah, the homeless coalition.
Coalition, high schools. There's money there for that.
I think it's a great idea to do that. Great use of the funds. Marcy, what do you think?
If you're in favor, I'm okay with it.
Okay, thank you. What do we do about that?
Motion.
Next.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution seventy-nine, two thousand and twenty-two with the extent of ten thousand dollars donation to our sister city.
Thanks, Mark. Can I get a second?
I'll second. I'll second.
That'll do it? Well done.
That'll do it. I'll second, yeah.
So thank you, guys. Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much, and we look forward to helping the ninety-one staff, the folks who lost everything, bringing the holidays to the kids. We're really lucky. Thank you.
Eric, you only made a motion. You didn't call.
Oh, I didn't. I'm so excited about that. Sorry. I'm so excited. I'm like, yay.
I'm excited to get out of here.
All right. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yay. So motion passes five zero.
And we should all still post it on our social media places and share the link so that residents can get involved with helping too.
Candace, thank you. We'll get that to us. And David, thank you guys so much. Wonderful. All right, so next we have items for council action discussion, or items of interest. Does anyone have anything they'd like to discuss?
I would.
All right, Mark, go for it.
Yeah, so we are, saw some wonderful presentations today about how great our recreation department is in our city, and we all know how great it is. And we've got one, one piece of parcel in our city that is open for recreation, that is open for something. We had, all received a letter from city manager about the Palm Beach North Athletic Foundation, and how they were no longer the group that will be providing a public-private partnership on that parcel. We received a letter also from Mike Winter, from them, asking to talk more. I think this deserves a workshop. I think we should have an opportunity to have an open conver, we can't talk about any of this stuff because of the sunshine law, and sometimes it gets very frustrating not being able to talk to you guys about things that come up. So I would love to see if we can invite the public, invite any interested entity, obviously the staff, to come and just tell us what they think we should put there. What do we want? What should go there? What is the best opportunity? The last thing I want to see is a simple two gymnasium rec center that is not going to be in the best interest of the future of the city's recreation department. It's not going to attract the tournaments and the events that we want. I understand the Palm Beach North Athletic Foundation had difficulty with fundraising. I know they presented an alternate method of funding, which didn't meet the standards that the staff felt comfortable with. But I think we should find a date and find a time where we can sit down and, if not talk about them specifically, about what is the next step. And I would ask you guys to, you know, support that effort, and we'll find a date that we can sit down and do that.
This is some information. There have been other proposals presented to the city all along during the process, and recently, we've been in touch with four, with three or four?
We reached out, if I may, Kumra, Purchase and Contracts Director. While this entire thing was going on with the Palm Beach North trying to raise the funding, there was at least seven interested parties who reached out to us and said, if at any time this fails, we'd like to be considered. And so they kept contacting us through the whole years. And so when the termination letter went out, I spoke with the city manager, and we discussed this, and I reached out to them and simply asked the question, are you still interested? And of the seven I contacted, one said, no, we have moved on. And then four of them said, yes, absolutely, one hundred percent, we're interested. So waiting to see what, how this settles to then move forward.
Thank you. I think that you have seen a classic example of everything we have tried to accomplish with our P3 program, in which the city is not liable or put at risk for any of these proposals. And the initial contact we've had with at least three of them so far, I think that there's some potential there, actually expressed potential, that they're fully funded, and they're meeting the requirements that the city has as far as contract that we have with the county. And it looks like they could certainly meet the deadline, because they're full, they say they're fully funded. It would have to be investigated. You can certainly have a workshop if you want, but the process is ongoing right now to try to move those proposals along, and we will be getting, probably scheduling meetings and talking to these people to see if they're really for real or not. But you can have a workshop, you can have a charrette. I understand, I wish that the other proposal was more viable than it was. It was certainly worthwhile, a great effort, but we're moving ahead with the process like we normally would, so.
Well, I'm not, I'm not here asking that the city does anything that it shouldn't do. Obviously, we are taking care of the city, and the city has to take care of its financial responsibility to the residents, and we don't want to put at risk the city taxpayers on any of this stuff. But if it didn't work out, then what is the next step? And we've had this conversation. I don't know what you all think. I don't know what the residents think. I mean, there was a nice, beautiful sign, and I'm sure each of you have had friends, neighbors call you and say, wow, that's going to be great. When's it going to be built? And now the sign's gone, so now you're going to start getting questions. What happened? And I'd just like to have an opportunity to just talk to you guys, if you can present something to us in the public so that we're not, you know, we are as informed as we can be. So when we talk about recreation, and we talk about the next and final piece of our recreation department, that we have answers, and we can ask questions in an open forum. And that's my...
We would certainly have to bring it to the council, and I think that we have a couple of very viable projects that we could bring to you in a short period of time, given us an opportunity to meet with them, get down and dig into the details. We could have a couple of programs that I think might have some merit to them very soon.
So would we do that during a council meeting? I'd prefer it not to be during a council meeting, because the meetings get full of stuff and...
Councilmember, if I may, the state has very specific rules about P3 and how the solicitations are handled. So effectively, the groups that we've initially contacted and have expressed interest, the state says we can't discuss that publicly. That's confidential. I can't tell you it is John Brown, Norris, or Mary Green, whatever. I can't tell you that, because the state says that's confidential until we make a determination to go with one of them.
And so when, I'm sorry?
The state, so I can't, we can't come here and say, hey, we're, John Brown, whoever, has made contact with us. I can't tell you that, because the state says that contact is confidential.
Until what point? What point can you...
After we meet with them initially, and we've made initial contact, and then they come, we said, okay, tell us what you're proposing, and then we can tell them, hey, and this is all meetings within the city environment. And then we say, hey, tell us what you're proposing, and this is what we're looking for. And then, if we decide to move forward, the state says we have to advertise it publicly and say, for three weeks, every week for three weeks, and say, hey, we have received a proposal that's going to put X on the property. If somebody else is interested, you can also submit a proposal. That's how that works.
But before the proposal process, you're allowed, are you allowed to talk about the concepts before any proposal and without, without discussing? But before the proposal process, you're allowed, are you allowed to talk about the concepts before any proposal and without discussing any people or any companies or any branding? Are you allowed to just talk about the general concepts that they're proposing or that they had proposed to you?
That's kind of easy. And I think Max probably can step in because as long as you're not revealing what is being discussed between the group, whatever the interested group is that we decided to go with. I'm sure that would probably legal where you just broadly explain something, but the law, I can only tell you what the law says. P3 procedure says it's confidential. It's not public record. You can't discuss it in public until you make a decision and then you have to put that to the newspaper.
I guess the question that I have is, I'm trying to understand what Mark and Marcy are asking for. Does the city have an idea of what we would like to see there? And is that something that could be shared with us? Or do we have to wait until we see what the individual people, the companies are offering us to make that decision?
The city can do that. The city, the recreation department, and that's what we shared initially in the original request or proposal. We said, this is what we want. This is what we think the needs are. This is what we'd like. And you need to address this. Okay, you want to put a ice rink, but you also address, you have to also address X. Right? So with this initial meeting, of course, we're going to say to these interested parties, you have to address X. Because that's what the requirements of the recreation department and the community needs.
Let me see if I can clarify the answer. We go through the process of talking to those people who want to make a proposal to the city. We vet that proposal. Before anything can happen, it has to come to you for an approval with the contract and an agreement. So that proposal would come to you with a contract and agreement like we did the last proposal. But until the point that we make, as Kumra says, until we've got a decision to bring to you a project, we're not allowed to talk about it. And that's how we did the last one.
So another question, and I'm very, like all of us, disheartened and disappointed that it didn't work out. Obviously, we all are. That was such a special project that I think we all looked forward to seeing in our city. The park is, as we just learned today, and knew actually, is such a special thing in our city. It does draw such economic development and we, all of us have worked so hard on that park, getting it here. And the last piece to be developed in our minds needs to be unique. I know all of us agree with that. Needs to be unique and it needs to be something very special. And I think, if I may, say maybe what Mark might be asking is that we have input for the next time to say, we would like it to be something special like that. We would like to know what options do we have now going forward? Because obviously, it's been four years. Whether it ends up with that exact concept or not, somebody else, you know, I think it's having the, but having the discussion. I know that the community right across the street, Old Palm, was so excited to have that, which I was actually a little surprised about. But they were so excited to have that facility there. And Mark's right, they will be asking us. And so having a charrette, having, maybe community will come out, having a, maybe it's a survey monkey that goes out for this indoor facility. What would you like to see? But something where we can engage everybody on this piece. Because it's something that we've all worked so hard. And this is the last piece of the puzzle. And I think that is something I, I mean, I would love to be involved in as well.
Can I, can I say something on that? I think like this piece of property, which I guess we have to engage the county with as well. It's like any other building that, that staff, they do all the proposals, they do, they gather the information. We've all learned a lot from the ice skating rink not going in. And that's, it is a big bummer. But I think at this point, we're back at ground zero. So now it's back to staff to re-dream or re-visualize what they're going to use with that with the vendors or proposals they have coming at them. And in my personal opinion, as citizens who we are, it's not our turn yet. Because they don't even know, they don't even have any pen to the paper on anything. And then when we do get our turn, when staff brings it to us, then, then we do have something to chew on and something to discuss. But until I think staff does their job, I really think we're in a wait and see program with, like the rest of the community. Am I wrong?
You're on point. And we like to see things as unique and as serving the public as we can too. And I assure you, we're not going to bring back anything less than that. But the process is, we would, told them that the proposers, we would back to them next week with information as to setting up meetings and having their proposals. So this is moving along as per the statutes and the requirements that we are doing.
Well, we know.
I don't want to prejudge anything, but I think there's some very viable projects that you would be happy to have on that land. And they are funded according, we will verify everything, but that's, that's what we do and bring that back to you. Yes, you can hold, go have a charrette if you want to. That's fine. But our process has to continue.
Well, I think my question was, and this is why we have to talk about it, because you don't know. And I can't talk to anybody, so I want to know what the plan is. I mean, if, if you're telling me, and I obviously have to trust you and I always do, that there are viable entities that are ready to take over that spot, then great. If you're going to say, we're going to back away from X because we don't want to commit to backing a bond, but we have nothing in the background except, okay, we're going to go build two gymnasiums on that spot. Then that's not something that I would want to accept. And I don't think anybody would want to. So, you know.
I'm telling you that basically on our first contact, it would appear there's viable projects that state that they're fully funded. We need to meet with them and get the details and the information so we can verify what they're telling us. And at that point, if they're proposing something preposterous, we say that is certainly not going to happen. This is what we want. Although I can't have that. This, oh yeah, that's good. That's how we go through the process. And.
Do we have a timeline on these, on what we're looking?
Like I said, we're going to communicate with them next week and set up times when we can sit with them and tell them to come to the committee and make a full presentation, including how they're going to finance what they're saying. But in the meantime, we have to review the project and it will change things. So it will require another meeting. How are you going to finance that? Once we get that down and we make a selection of who we want to present to you, don't want to waste your time with someone that's not a viable project. Then at that time, we'll enter into Max's realm of the legalities and the proposed way that this would work. Just like we did with the other project on a contract, we present you a program and contract. You can thumbs up it. You can thumbs down it. But that's the way it works. That's how Kumra was explaining it to you. That's what we have to do.
Are we tied in by the county on a timeline? Are we tied in by the county on a timeline?
I think so.
To get this done to, what is our timeline?
The county's timeline?
2028.
I don't know what the, I can't recall exactly what the expiration, what the deadline is in the agreement, but.
2028.
28, I thought.
January 2028.
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
You got five, four years.
We've got time.
You got four years. Well, four years goes by quick.
Time, but you don't.
Not really.
The last six years go by.
So there was another question. The, I think we all, or we all received an email asking for Palm Beach North Athletic to be on the next agenda. Is that something that we need to vote on? I think there was a request email. For a presentation.
We have no contract. We have no agreement. We have no relationship. I will respond to that letter tomorrow. And I will not agenda a non-contract. But I would be happy to tell them, if you can provide us a viable funding project that doesn't put cities' bond rating or the money, I'd be happy to hear from you. If you've got money and you're ready to go, by all means, let's talk. I'd love to see it happen.
Right.
But I, I just can't wait. And I can't endorse the funding system method that they presented. I can't do that. And I can't wait. I just feel like we can't wait any further. We got a deadline to meet when you go for financing and building and construction and everything that has to be done. And it has to be done, well, it sounds like a long, far away, but it's not when you get into this thing. You need, in my opinion, you need a good probably five years from the planning to the opening.
I agree. So they can actually change their concept and plan and.
I will meet with them anytime they.
Be one of those four people or make it five people possibly.
You understand? I will meet with them, but not to discuss a plan I've already said we can't do.
Right.
It's just.
Understand.
I have no problem. I like them. They're nice guys. And we meet, we talk, we have a good time, but I've got to move.
We got a kind of a responsibility to the community to make sure that we support staff and that moves along, right? So, because if it's a five-year program, that leaves us one year left for hiccups along the way and delays and, and the price of steel to go up or whatever. So I think we need to turn staff loose on that so it makes some traction.
As well as all the other projects we have going on that staff has got on their shoulders. You know, we have a lot that we ask of them, everything from like what's going to, you know, what's going to happen with everything that's going on, finishing up the golf course, finishing up everything. And then to add this in as well, to have it have been stalled for this many years. It's terribly.
And they really have a timeframe on this. So they, we know they're going to bring back something magical. It won't get by, it won't get by Natalie and staff if it's not. And then it's got to get by us.
Yeah.
So by the time they present us something, we're going to be giggling over it, I'm sure.
Oh.
So we were giggling over the ice rink, but it just didn't work out for.
Mark, thank you for what you said about bringing in residents. It's always extraordinarily important to keep that communication open. It's the idea of bringing it out. But yeah, P3 is P3. But anyway, anyone else have any more discussion about Palm Beach North Athletic Foundation? No? All right. Anyone have anything else they want to talk about in general? I'm no, I've got one thing.
The city attorney has a report.
Oh, I just have one item for council discussion and interest. So it's just to, I want to personally thank Candace and David. We had a great week. Florida City Government Week was like six 12-hour days in a row. And you guys were extraordinary from getting everyone together for read for the record at the tail end of it to the very beginning. I don't even know how many high schools and colleges and pictures and people that we got to spend time with. So thank you both for everything that you did on that. And then also another huge shout out. Fall Festival was amazing. So thank you to everyone for making that happen. I would love some data on that. Is there any way to even know how many people showed up?
We estimate 9,500 plus.
Holy cow. So that's, that's definitely more than just the gardens, kids and moms and dads and families.
Saying something on that, I went over to Alton Halloween. It was so packed, I almost couldn't drive down the street. I mean, they were just slammed. And once you get into the neighborhoods where people are putting up all their stuff and the golf course, there were hundreds of people just on any given street, which I thought was really cool because it used to be in the Heights.
Yeah.
But, you know, it was really cool to see that many people out in a brand new community.
It took me 20 minutes literally to get into my neighborhood because the gate was stacked way past on Donald Ross Road, getting into Trick or Treat in Evergreen.
Anyone who says Florida is all old people?
I know.
I know our community is all that. Because I had zero kids come to my house.
Oh, no. You got to put some pumpkins out. So nonetheless, thank you. I know that was, that was a huge lift for all staff. So thank you guys for everything that you did for that.
And I just wanted to, Carl, we will listen to you. I apologize for that. And then lastly, I want to thank both Chief Brier and Chief Shannon for everything you guys do to keep us safe and for everything that you're doing to outreach to other communities with our staff and then welcoming our staff back so that they're not burned out when they come back. It's a huge undertaking on top of everything you already do. So that is my piece. Max?
Yes, ma'am. The only thing I have is, I hate to do this to you guys, but I just, I did notice that on Resolution 57-2022 was on consent. And I noticed that it was on there to change the dates of the meeting in January. And we also included to change the meeting in December. And we had asked you guys earlier today via email when you were available. Three of you are not available on the 8th. All of you but one are available on the 14th. And we didn't get a chance to change Resolution 57 because we had, when we originally did it, we assumed the 8th would work for everybody. And so that resolution is on there and it was passed as 12/8. And it needs to be changed to 12/14. So we need a motion for reconsideration of Resolution 57-2022, a second and a vote. And then a motion to approve Resolution 57-2022 with the date amended to December 14th.
All right. Thank you. So can I get a motion?
I'll make the first motion to reconsider the date for the December meeting.
Well, the whole resolution is reconsidered.
The whole resolution.
December and January, yep.
I'll second it.
All right, second.
Whatever she said.
Okay, so we, let's discuss this. We, the reason why December 8th isn't working is because.
People aren't here.
Three people are out. So that's significant. The 14th, we have one out. Are there any other dates that could work? For anyone else?
It's a Thursday?
It doesn't have to be Thursday because the 14th is a Wednesday.
14th is a Wednesday. Do it.
Wednesdays, I hate Wednesdays, but if I have to take the whole day out, I will.
14th is a Wednesday?
Yes, it's a Wednesday.
December 14th is a Wednesday.
Does it matter?
And then the 7th is also out because the three people who are out on the 8th will be out, the 7th, 8th and 9th.
And the first Thursday, that's out too?
First Thursday is the first, right?
First Thursday is out because the mayor and I are going to both be in Kissimmee, Florida, trying to get, move the mobility legislation forward.
14th works for me.
Oh wait, so this.
That's why we came up with the 14th because then we get into the next week, the schedule gets even worse. We couldn't do it on Tuesday, the 13th, because there's planning and zoning in here that evening. Can't do it on the 12th because I have another meeting that I have to be to. There's a prior commitment for another municipality. So the 14th was the date that seemed to work. And we don't want to move it into the 20 something? 14th.
14th. I'm so sorry. What about the 6th?
I'm away. I'm still gone.
Are you still gone? Okay.
Just leave it to 14th.
14th. All right.
So we need to, we need to call the question on reconsideration.
You're not here in town?
Well, I'll just change my flight.
All right.
I'll call the question on the reconsideration of, go ahead. It's a reconsideration of Resolution 57. Oh, yeah. I'll call the question on reconsidering Resolution 57.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No? Motion passes.
Now, now we need a motion and a vote to pass Resolution 57 with the date changed to December 14th. I'll make a motion to pass Resolution 57 with the date changed as December 14th.
December 14th. And then, and do we have to do January also?
It's already in there. It's not changing.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry for the procedural nightmare there, but I appreciate your, your.
No, thank you for letting us know.
Can I just verify? It's 6 o'clock also, right?
January is still, it's the same as in the resolution. It's still, it's still the 12th.
So December 14th at 6:00 PM.
And the time has not changed, correct?
Still the same time. Just a date.
Uh-oh.
I won't be here out of default. I'll be just. And other than that, I'm finished.
Okay. Shall we go home? All righty then. Where is no other business?
Was that that?
That's it? That's the report? All right. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.